Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, July 21st, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are ever mindful, as we involve ourselves in the business of the city, how important it is that we each individually take careful consideration of issues before us, and follow the understandings and the good ideas that are put forth. And I especially want to be thankful for the outstanding city staff, which has been put together that really is here to aid the city council in making critical decisions. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be shown to each one of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. And as always, we ask for blessing and understanding and a vision on the parts of the city council as they act on the actions that are coming before them. We know that Batavia is a very, very fortunate community, knowing how many good people we have now living in our town, and the site that more new ones are going to be moving in with the number of new houses being built. So we seem to be in a good place, and we are thankful for that blessing. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Farazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lowman?
Here.
Diaper?
Here.
Farenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Vogelsinger. Twelve present, two absent, Your Honor.
We have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Okay, moving to item number four, reminder that if you're going to address the city council tonight, we ask that you come forward and use the podium with the microphone because all this is being recorded and will be televised on BATV, and if you don't come up and use that microphone, if you're trying to speak to us from the audience, you're probably not going to be heard. So we need to make sure that everybody follows that through. And let the record reflect that Alderman Vogelsinger has just joined us. All right, moving then to item number five, items to be removed, added or changed on our agenda. I'm not aware of any. Does anybody on the council have anything they want to talk about? Okay, moving on to that, moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Beck?
Yes, Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole Minutes for June 26th, 2025, and July 7th, 2025, the April and May 2025 financials, and the Motor Fuel Tax Compliance Report for January 2019 through December 2020, and for approval, the July 18th, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,103,986.81. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,756,168.68. Ordinance 2025-38, Extension of a 90-day moratorium on the acceptance and processing of certain building and zoning applications for the LI Light Industrial and GI General Industrial properties in the South River Street Gateway Overlay District. Resolution 2025-94-R, authorize staff to proceed with firewall upgrade purchase. Resolution 2025-41-R, authorizing execution of the notice of award for the Year Three Lead and Galvanized Steel Water Service Replacement Project to Miller Pipeline LLC. Ordinance 2025-95-R, authorizing the purchase of two pickup trucks for the Fire Department. And resolution 2025-96-R, approving a retention incentive for Superior Health Linens. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
I would just say we need to add "I" as well. I think we skipped "I."
Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance 2025-40, variances for principal structure setbacks at 329 and 333 South Harrison Street. I now move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Will you hold on a minute? No, you don't. Okay. So we have a motion in second for the approval of the consent agenda. Clerk call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Farazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody on the audience wish to address this? Seeing none. Okay, we will then move to item number eight, which is presentation update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. Jerry? He's here again for another update.
I am, yeah. Can't get rid of me. All right. Play, present. Okay, here's your update for July. We're getting, we're getting close. So a lot of the stuff that you see is going to be nothing flashy, but it's a lot of wiring and program that's going on right now, getting stuff ready to start up and receive wastewater. So at Headworks, they're finalizing the HVAC, the make-up air units and the exhaust fans, and other equipment startups in that building. In the primary clarifiers, they're finishing the coating on the outside of the retaining walls and the clarifier structures themselves, finalizing the electrical terminations, and also finishing the HVAC, and that is for odor control. At the primary clarifier diversion structure, they placed some concrete fillets in the bottom of that structure, installed the operators on the slide gates that are at that structure for flow control, and wired them. At the primary clarifier control building, or PCCB, again, more electric HVAC and equipment startups. At the south entrance and around some portions of the site, we're doing some preparation for the subbase and the bottom layer of aggregate for paving in those areas. I have some photos. So this is just tearing up some of the existing pavement that had failed before the project or during construction. We identified some areas, so they're scraping up the asphalt. The middle picture is at the south end of Marco Drive, looking north through the bike path, and so is that picture on the right-hand side. Same up by the north end, by Headworks, there's a new access road to get to the south side of this building. So the stone base is placed for that, and we're getting ready for pavement there. And this is sort of split, so on the left you have the electrical being run for the gate openers at the south entrance, where there'll be a motorized gate for a plant staff access. And then on the right-hand side, that's just north of the Headworks building on Flynn Street. So Grainology Brewstillery is just to the right there. They are putting down the filter fabric and the three-inch stone that makes up the base for that road. At Headworks, they've placed concrete for the entrance slab and the sidewalk around the east side of the building, connecting it to the existing main building. They painted some of the sills on the windows, so that's coming together. The windows will probably be one of the last things that they put in. HVAC, so we have our condensing unit and fan coil inside. The electrical room is going to keep that room nice and cool, even during the hottest days. And here you see some of the surface preparation and finishing that they're doing on the retaining wall, just at the west end of Flynn Street. There's an aerial from June 1st, and so there's not a ton that changes between these two photos. If you don't look sharply, you'll miss it. Just forming up sidewalk, final grading, and getting some of the piled-up spoils to the left side of the photo out of the way. Here's a photo from the north side, looking southwest at the Headworks building. You notice the fence is up. The grading looks like it's a lot closer to finish, and the doors are all in place as well. For the clarifiers, painting of some process piping, there's some minor stuff. There's some electrical that went in, the control panels for the clarifiers that are in place. Coating of the walls, this is both on the inside face and on the outside face, just to make that give a nice uniform finish to them. Lighting on the bridges for the clarifiers went in, and there on the right side you see more of the surface prep and finishing of that wall. This is in the primary clarified diversion structure. That, in essence, is the concrete fillet. It's just a sloped area. It helps with hydraulics and helps guide all of the liquids in there so that debris doesn't form in the corners. These, the actuators on the gates in the diversion structure, those will help control flow through the plant. And HVAC, so the odor control system that's treating the air at those clarifiers, which is a source of odors, finalizing that installation as well. There's an aerial from June 1st, and like I said, there's not a huge change between these two, but here's the aerial from July 18th, so just a couple days ago. Sidewalk going in at the final clarifiers at the south end, or, yeah, the south end of the site. There's some photos of inside the sludge handling building. They're pulling wire in there. There's not a ton of progress being made. They're focusing on the critical path items, but they'll roll onto this as soon as we get wastewater through the Headworks and the clarifiers. This is the structure that used to be where we did UV disinfection. This is the new sump that we added for stairway access, and now we have stairs, so we can walk down, safe access, and it's easy to get in there. All right, for cost, in terms of progress, like I said, we're getting close. Ninety-three percent of construction costs have been spent with the general contractor, total, including engineering and construction costs of just over $41 million. And on paper, 67% of their schedule, because they're not scheduled to be finished until next year. Change order five was submitted, so that's what I have as the current, that 67, about $1,000 change order. With that included, we're at just under 0.2%. Still no time extension since the contractor so far ahead of schedule, and there'll be one, probably two more, change orders before all is said and done, because now is when we're really finding out little things that we need to tweak with the, with the construction. As far as a schedule update, you'll see this on, on every slide. This is like the original completion for June of 2026. The contractor has finished the final clarifier rehabilitation, so that's in gray. The Headworks clarifiers and PCCB are all now slated to be end of August, so I've made that change. Still saying just five months ahead of schedule, because a lot can happen in those last few months. And then I want to talk again about, I've been getting some questions, and feel free to send them to me as you have them, either call me on my cell or email me. Drivers for this next phase, in their current permit, you've heard this before, but just to reiterate, the city is required to meet a 0.5 milligram per liter effluent total phosphorus by 2030. That's the driver for the tertiary filtration part of the project. The expansion from 4.2 MGD to 4.9 MGD triggers what's called anti-degradation, and that's, in layman's terms, is just the receiving stream cannot receive more load or pounds of solids, BOD, that they're receiving right now with an expanded plant. So you have to tighten up your unit processes. And the future capacity is 4.9 MGD, so when is that going to happen? You saw this last month, the projection for 2040 based on community development with all of the developments in town that we see as happening in the next 20 years at that point, now it's 15, brought us to 4.9 MGD for average daily design flow. Here's something that we look at when we're talking about these projections is rainfall data. Rainfall data is an indicator of how much infiltration you can get through your collection system. None of these pipes are watertightened, so when the groundwater table is up due to lots of rain events, say you have a higher-than-average rainfall in that year, typically your average flow into the wastewater plant does increase. And these are those numbers. So this is the rainfall in blue bars. The orange points are the average annual flow into the, into the treatment plant spanned out over a year. And then the green points are the three-month low-flow scenario. So you'll see how the peak in rainfall tends to bring up that average annual flow just a little bit. In 2020, the city completed sewer separation, one of the three major areas, so now we're almost completely separated with our sanitary sewer versus our storm sewer. After that, we also did have several drought years, but in 2020, that was a, almost right at that average number of 32.6 inches over the year. And so I've projected 2025 to be at that level, because it looks like we might be near there. In terms of projecting into the future, so this chart basically shows from that projected flow of about 3.8 MGD with the development spread out over the next 15 years. And that's that orange dashed line that's coming up at an angle. That's about the path, just normalized over 15 years, for where we're shown to be in 2040. And we look at this again like every five or 10 years anyways. But the last comprehensive plan was in 2019, so this is based on that data still. With our projected path of completing Phase 2B in 2031, that's right at about the crosspoint of where our projected flows are at our design average flow. So that's just a symbol of what the driver for the project is in terms of development for flow. Just showing what those numbers are. This is a compilation of all the other figures. So this is a very busy slide, that's why I had the other slides in the beginning. This is showing all the average rainfall since 2008 with all the flow data that we have into the treatment plant, and then it has the projections into the future. So are there any questions for any of this data that I presented at the end? No? Okay. The other thing that we have to look at in terms of the EPA's eyes on us is what our biochemical oxygen demand is loading the plant. We design our treatment facilities based on not only EPA design guidelines but historical data, so we take all of these numbers into account. The blue varying line is the measured amount of pounds of BOD entering the site. The gray horizontal line is basically, that's the EPA design standard for 4.2 MGD. And then you have the yellow and the blue below that are 90 and 80% of that design capacity. So as a reminder, the EPA really wants you to start planning your expansion when you get to 80%. That's their, that's what their rules are based around. Gives you enough time, in theory, to design it, well, plan it, design it, construct it, and have it operational before it's exceeded. Same goes with total suspended solids, they look at that too. So we take into account all three of these items, both flow, BOD, and TSS, and designing the expanded facility. You'll see that we're a little bit closer to that average line for the EPA design standard for solids than we are for BOD or flow, but they're all the same in the EPA's eyes. Some future regulatory requirements. So I mentioned anti-degradation, that mostly affects nitrogen, so the future total nitrogen limits, you can only really do that biologically. So the two options for our design, no matter what we put in, we can operate this facility either as an A2O or a Bardenfoe, they're fancy wastewater terms for removing both phosphorus and nitrogen from the flow. And that, how the city operates the plant when we get that limit is totally dependent on what that total nitrogen limit is. So we've got that in the plan. In terms of PFOS, there's going to be testing requirements in the next round of permits. Talking with people down in the state permitting department, they're basically saying anybody who renews right now and anybody expecting a new permit this year, which includes the city of Batavia, is going to be hit with testing requirements for finding out what the levels of PFOS are in their effluent and their biosolids. And then they're going to, the plan is to base the limits off of that once they get real data. There are no limits in Illinois right now, but other states do have limits. Tron Associates, along with many other firms, are part of what's called Midwest Biosolids. It's a group of scientists, districts, municipalities, and engineers that are researching as quickly as they can what the path of the PFOS chains are and how to best get rid of them. It appears that the best way right now is for source elimination and banning of the projects, because people still use PFOS in manufacturing goods, it's just different chains. In terms of microplastics, I think that's a little bit further on down the line. The main concern is their impact on membranes, because the microplastics, you're talking about nanometer-sized bits of plastic, mainly impact on membrane treatment or reverse osmosis, which we're not doing here, and so I don't have a concern on that for the future of the treatment facility. And that's the update. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? I would just make the comment that I have been asked by several area mayors about what we're doing down there, and when would be a good time for maybe them to bring some folks over for a tour? And I had one in here last Monday, and it was the, the mayor was there. I said, "Well, we may be talking 2026 before it's really going to be in a suitable..." Well, then we went down and I drove by it, and she was overwhelmed by what she saw, and she says, "Well, I definitely want to get back here whenever it is." So we've got some other cities kind of standing in line here, waiting to see what Batavia looks like when it's all done, because kind of the word on the street is that you guys are building it the best and right ways, so we're getting attention from others, so, and not from a negative perspective, so I appreciate that.
That's always good. Not a negative perspective, yes. Probably good to plan on that for the spring. I mean, we're going to be starting up in the fall, sure, I'm just not sure it's going to be like paved out and ready for people to walk through it until the spring.
Very good. Anybody else? Well, thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Next one is a presentation quarterly review of the Batavia Environmental Commission. You see, we have them here. Welcome. You come in support of each other, or you each got a different story.
Over half of us. Let's see, Laura, did you, were you able to pull that?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for having us. It's nice to be here again. As a refresher, my name is Alex. I'm chair of the commission, and I also have Nikki behind me, Andrew, and Michael. So we're just going to recap what we've been doing the last few months, give you an update, and answer any questions that you guys have for us. I do also, too, want to point out, our member list has grown a little bit, so we've had four, what we're calling, non-voting high school ambassadors who have been working with us. Anna just recently graduated, so she'll be leaving Batavia to pursue college, and she's going to be studying in the environmental field, so we're really excited for her. She's recruited three new students who have been coming to our meetings and showing an interest in what we're doing and wanting to be active participants, so Gina, Hayden, and Casey. We have big plans for them, which we'll talk about in a little bit as well. So for education, we have just been continuing to post on our social media about various environmental and sustainable topics, and also promoting some volunteer opportunities, as well as working with some of the city communications about specifically the good things that we've been doing here with the Bag Fee Funds. We've also participated in the South River Street Corridor Plan and provided comments and thoughts related to that. This spring, we hosted a bike path cleanup on the Batavia spur of the Prairie Path. That was pretty well attended. I think we had somewhere around 10 or so people come out, and they had never heard of the Batavia Environmental Commission before. They found out about the event just through where we had advertised it, so it was great to have them and be able to meet new people, and that actually resulted in two of them coming to our last month's meeting. So it was a really good outreach. Hopefully, we'll start doing more volunteer events like that in the future. And Batavia Big Tree nominations, I feel like every time we come here, we're like, "Yeah, we're still doing it." We do have forthcoming seven official Big Tree announcements. We are just kind of wrapping up how we are going to announce that and kind of make it, hopefully, a nice thing for the community and a celebratory announcement. And then we also had a promotional video that a high school student, Rozzy, put together for us. Hopefully, it will play. I'm going to try, but for those of you who didn't see it...
Hi, I'm Barb McKittrick, and I'm a member of the Batavia Environmental Commission. We have a program called the Big Tree Program, where we investigate trees that have been nominated by citizens of Batavia, whether in their own backyards or on public property. And the reason we started this program is to get the residents of Batavia really excited about trees, to appreciate trees. Trees have a lot of economic and environmental benefits to people and wildlife and to urban communities, so we wanted to get adults and children involved in noticing trees around them, valuing them, and submitting nominations of what they think are the biggest trees of each species that's native to Batavia. And with that data, we can get a better inventory of the different species of trees that we have in our city, and that helps us understand which trees thrive under certain conditions. We have a parkway program here in Batavia that we co-sponsor purchase of trees to put on the public parkways, so we want to continue that with trees that do well in our environment.
You can nominate a big tree by going on to the city of Batavia's webpage. We have a nomination form link. We also have a Big Tree Toolkit that gives you information and details on how to nominate a tree and how to do measurements. One of us will then go out and confirm that measurement, and we will then let you know where your tree falls amongst all of the other trees.
Hi, I'm Barb McKittrick, and I'm a member of the Batavia Environmental...
There we go. So that was shared on our social media pages, and I think the city has it as well. So hopefully, you know, we'll keep, when we're ready for the next round of nominations, we'll just kind of occasionally put that out there. But yeah, definitely, again, if you have a big tree, if you know people who have big trees, let people know that this program exists. We would like to just get people out there and curious about the trees in their neighborhood, learn more about the trees in their neighborhood, and, you know, they're a valuable asset to our community, so. So yeah, that's upcoming, and just kind of a continuing program. The other kind of, lastly, like, big thing that we've been doing pretty much since the beginning of the year is revamping our strategic plan, so it's been quite a while since we did that. So we've been really trying to hammer what our goals are. Max was really nice and helped us to kind of like brainstorm, kind of moderate through that session, and then we've taken it from there to kind of finalize a draft. So we will be approving that at our upcoming July meeting. But I did just want to kind of run through our main goals that we've established for the next few years. So under education and training, we're going to develop and implement an annual environmental education calendar, and we'll work with the city on that. And then coupled with that, an education event calendar. Our second goal is sustainable community and economic vitality, where we would like to improve recognition of residents, businesses, and organizations that are doing things that are valuable to the environment and that are undergoing green projects. We would also like to encourage residents to volunteer to restore and improve our public natural areas. And then we'd also like to begin working more with the Active Transportation Advisory Commission to help them meet some of their goals, as it aligns with some of our goals as well. Next is healthy and resilient watersheds. So we'll continue to support completion of the Riverbank Stabilization Plan, support Salt Smart Certification and Practices, work on supporting and hosting river cleanup events, working with other watershed organizations, and developing incentives for homeowners to practice sustainability related to...
to practice sustainability related to water usage and runoff. Another goal is sustainable energy transition. So we'll be supporting energy infrastructure studies in hoping to encourage the increase of electrified vehicles and equipment in the city and also supporting home energy And lastly, thriving ecosystems and urban biodiversity. So working to establish a naturalization capital program, reducing light pollution, reviewing city codes to see where we can adjust some language to make these practices easier for residents and also promoting and supporting stewardship of natural areas and native landscaping on private and public properties. Coming up, we are hosting a table at Two River Rhapsody Concerts in July and August. We've been working with city staff to draft ordinance language to incorporate our three high school members into formal voting positions. So those would specifically be three student positions, but trying to engage them and make them more active in our group and have more of a stake and let them kind of be a voice for their generation. So that ordinance language, once we've reviewed it on our end, then it will come to you guys. And then now that we've kind of got our strategic plan figured out, we're going to really start looking at those action items and formulating a plan to move forward with those goals. And then lastly, we've mentioned our of the Fox native landscaping proposal a couple times. So I think Nikki is going to talk a little bit or ask some questions.
I just wanted to see where we are at with the approval, if there was any questions for me. I've since put together a proposed plant list. I'm not suggesting that we put in any seven-foot plants that are not going to make anyone happy, but very easy to manage landscaping. The plants there are very easy to manage and I just wanted to see if there's any questions on that.
Yes, Nikki. I don't think that anybody has seen the plan. I think that came through Tim and did Tim pass it out? Because I haven't seen anything either.
He sent a memo around. The hope was that we could discuss it further and then we could actually get outside with some of the city staff to determine the proper location. We're proposing 1,000 square feet. That way you can kind of still enhance the artwork, but that way it's also giving us the plants that support the message of the art for the ecosystem services that they are providing. But ideally, I'd like to get out there with somebody from the city staff so that we could measure and that way we're allowing for any events that are happening. And the plant list, we just put together, so that I can certainly send around.
Okay, that's not a problem. Work with Tim and we can get a couple of us out there.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Yeah, I would just comment that Alex did send us the memo at the beginning of June. So it would be great to have, yeah, refresher. If you could, I would move that we bring them back to have a full conversation about what the plan is and the location and what your vision is and go through the memo a little bit more in a cow discussion setting would be great.
Yeah, so like I stated, it was, we're proposing a 1,000-square-foot garden that will incorporate native plants that benefit our environment. The idea is that we will put the plants in a one-foot matrix and that way they become over time. That's your natural mulch. That's your weed competition. You don't have to worry about weeds growing. The first year is the most important for getting it, getting it going because you have to remove the grass. We have to formulate some kind of a design. The idea is not to go with the complete naturalistic garden as you would see at the wildflower sanctuary. This would be more formalized. That way, you know, it just kind of helps everyone enjoy it a little bit more. I know a lot of times people look at native plants and they think of them as weedy. That's certainly not the case. There's so much beauty in these plants and the services that they provide are just very important. So we're hoping that we can do that. The idea we thought of was putting in some kind of a pathway and maybe seeding. I think we've kind of nixed that for right now. Maybe somewhere down the line, I think it would be great if we could work with possibly Water Street Studios to kind of put in some maybe naturalistic art. If there's something to be made, maybe, you know, seeding out of wood or, you know, something that incorporates that. But the goal then is that there's events over there and grass just doesn't really provide much environmental benefits. As you can see, there's a lot of geese that congregate over there. I've noticed that a couple of coyote statues have been put in. I think flowers would be a lot more appealing. And that's, that's kind of where we're at. In terms of funding, we would like to fund this and then we would also be seeking out donations from some of the people that maybe worked with it, possibly Conservation Foundation, possibly reaching out to some of the local native nurseries to see if they would be willing to donate some plants. And then for putting it all, for the installation, we would just like to see some volunteers out there to get it going. I think it's important for people to get involved and then they can see that their work shows off and they can come back and enjoy it for all the events over there and just walking down the riverwalk and kind of as a connecting piece to the wildflower sanctuary, but like I said, just a little bit more formalized with the design. Oh, so the photos that are here are from the native garden that we put in over at Ellis Gustafson School. We just recently had the microburst that went through and unfortunately we were giving, they do a summer literacy program. And I was asked to come speak about the garden as this is year two. And unfortunately, the microburst came through and I reassured everybody, you know, it looked like someone came through with a weed whacker. And I said, this is why we put in native plants. These are going to come back. You're not going to have to, you know, they're going to come back full strength here. They're going to look beautiful and this is how they were just the other day. You would never know that a microburst came through. They are thriving and just the overall reaction from the community has been so wonderful. The students, the staff, everyone has really, really appreciated the garden and it's been a great addition. So those were some of the plants.
I would just like to say that I'm pleased to see that you're continuing to research the tallest tree in Batavia. And I say that because for a number of years, there was a four or five-member citizens group that used to meet at McDonald's Restaurant on Tuesday, on Tuesday and Friday afternoons at 2:00. And they would get into a big argument almost every week about they just found another tree that could be thrown into the question. And the people in the argument were Harold Hall, Harold Hobrook, who was a long time the janitor at the Batavia Middle School, Bosco Hall, that was the former street superintendent for Batavia, and Frank Sopp, who was the city tree surgeon and cutter. And those guys used to have huge arguments about what was the tallest tree in Batavia or the biggest tree. Sopp said they're not the same thing. And so I don't know, it was never anything that anybody ever agreed to reach a consensus to, but they had great arguments. And I can remember that one of the tallest trees was in the 200 block of South Prairie Street. And that was one that supposedly started from a sale that the Batavia Tree Commission had back in the 1950s when Bill Wood was principal at J.B. Nelson School and they, they sold kids a twig that you went home and planted in your yard for a dime. And one kid bought one and came home and planted it and his father along said, that thing became the tallest tree in Batavia and he had all kinds of problems with his property and everything else for that twig that the kid bought for a dime at J.B. Nelson School. So you can see how strange these arguments become, but that's kind of a good old Batavia story. And it's true that there was all these guys that would religiously get together twice a week and argue about where the biggest or tallest tree was. So thank you for continuing the tradition.
And just to further, what specifically else do you need from me in regards to the garden? Is it measurements? Is it, what would we need to get this approved?
That was the argument, you know, was it around the trunk? Was it how high it was? And at one time, they even asked the city public works to come over with a bucket truck and put it up and then try to fire a, something that they could measure the top of the tree with. And I don't know if that worked or not, but it, this went on for a long time and I don't, they say, I don't think there was ever an agreed upon, total agreement for what ever happened, so.
I think I'll second what Abby said, that we need to have this come back to a cow after you meet with staff and flesh out the size of it and if there's anything that we need to approve, but also just to come back to us again and so that way we can see what's going to happen there.
Are there any concerns that you have regarding the garden?
I would say including estimated cost, you know, with hopeful donations and help from local retailers. So cost to install, kind of what you envision, like how long it'll take to, how long it'll take for volunteers to install it, what you anticipate the maintenance being over the first couple of years as it gets established and how we'll accomplish that. And if it's a combination of volunteers and staff time, kind of recognizing what resources will be needed across those boards for like the first three to five years or so.
Got it.
That'd be helpful. I don't know if anybody else has any other things they'd want to see in that.
Because I think about the maintenance, you know, some of the stuff we have out there already for streetscape, we've actually had citizens that have taken over some of the maintenance and some of the care of those. So that might be something else to look forward to.
I have volunteered to kind of oversee the management of this and work with the city staff. I have also considered if the city is ever interested, they should maybe consider hiring somebody along the lines of a natural resource manager, a sustainability manager. You know, you can, you can create jobs that way. And I think that it's very important that we continue to increase and preserve our natural areas and our open space. I think there's a lot of education that's missing when we're hiring out contractors. Some things are possibly being, being removed or herbicited unintentionally. That's damaging those plants. And as we continue to develop, it's really, really important that we still keep native plants. They are truly sustaining us as humans and that's, you know, I think that's to be taken into consideration. But it could be worthwhile for the city to consider opening up some kind of a position that can help oversee some of those, the plants and the natural areas. I know I've talked with Tim about what areas are currently being managed by V3. You know, depending on the cost comparison there, you could create a job for somebody versus hiring contractors. Just an idea.
I would like to add that as of right now, the engineering department has been taking on that role. We started that a couple of years ago under my direction and we do have areas that we have converted. We also do have a list of natural basins that would be in line to convert and we do those as funds are available. And we will work with you guys to get everything, as Abby had mentioned, in line so that it'd be something comparable to a city proposal and then we'll bring it back for you guys to review.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your report.
Yes, so I guess just to wrap up, I know that the proposed data center is also on the agenda. I think we just wanted to provide a couple thoughts and questions that we had in relation to that. So I don't know if you want us to just talk through that now or if you want to wait until your discussion on that. And then also, I know the Clark Island Vegetation Management is also on there as well. So we're here to provide our thoughts on that and answer any questions as well, but yeah.
I would say don't leave. Have a seat for now. Thank you.
I don't think she's done. Are you done or did you want to like let us know how people could volunteer? Like I saw on that last slide.
Yes, yeah, we are, we meet monthly, the second Wednesday of each month, usually here in City Hall in the Appleton Conference Room. So you can always come to our meetings. We will also announce any volunteer opportunities that we have on our social media pages. And then if you have any questions, comments, concerns, you can always, on our commission page, you can contact us. There's a link there to send anything to us through that avenue as well. So yeah.
I just have one comment. As far as like the volunteer opportunities, I know you mentioned you put those on the social media. Is there an opportunity, maybe email us directly with those, with that information? Because sometimes we can pass that along to groups that we belong with and as people are trying to kind of walk back their social media presence, you know, that may be one way to be able to get that information out to groups that, you know, we definitely know that are looking for opportunities.
Yes, and that's a good reminder. We do have an email list serve. So Carolyn, who is formerly in our group, had been managing that. So we're kind of like transitioning, but yes, we do have an email list serve. So if you're interested in being on our email list, and we can just add the council as well to that email list, so you'll all get it if you, if you aren't already on there. But yeah, for sure.
Would you give the information to the city to put on their Friday email blast? Is that maybe where you should direct us to, like go look there instead?
Yeah, we've done that as well.
Okay.
I think the goal is for us to be notifying people of events and volunteer opportunities on like all of the different resources available to us.
Okay. Thanks for that reminder of that.
Yeah. Any other questions? I think the Clark Island stuff is up next too, so we can roll into that if there's nothing else unrelated.
I guess not, so thank you.
Should I, you want me to stay up here for the Clark Island discussion?
Do you have info on what we're talking about?
Well, I think the last time you guys had that up for discussion, I had sent along via email a rundown of our recommendations and our thoughts and any, I think a few additional questions that we had about specifically, it's the gravel bar on the north side of Clark Island in the river. And I believe that the city has a proposal from V3 to do vegetation management on that gravel bar. It would be targeted to most of the vegetation except for the American water willows that we worked with the Illinois Smallmouth Alliance to plant, which was kind of along the water's edge of that gravel bar. And those are really nice native plants that provide habitat for aquatic bugs and little young fish and also help to just improve the overall like habitat of the river. So I think our position in general is that we definitely appreciate the city recognizing those plantings and the volunteer effort that the Smallmouth Alliance put into planting those. I think over the course of at least two years, I can't remember if it was three years, as well as though all of those plants were donated through that organization. I think our question was, what is the overall strategy of managing that gravel bar? My understanding is that because it's in the river, it doesn't really have legal or official jurisdiction by the city nor the park district. When we did the water willow planting, neither the city nor the park district said, yeah, that's our responsibility. It was just kind of, let's just make sure we don't need a permit to do it. So I think my question is, are we just perpetually removing vegetation because nobody wants to see the vegetation? Like what is the ultimate concern for a vegetation management and vegetation removal on the island? Is it just aesthetics? Are there other concerns? And if it's just aesthetics, maybe we can work to, and I think V3 can do this, can actually manage removing the undesirable non-native plants and promoting the beneficial native species that are there and even potentially planting in some additional beneficial species. And Nikki mentioned geese on city property, geese like low-growing vegetation or no vegetation. They like to be able to see very far. So when you do actually have plants that are growing a little bit taller, that deters them from congregating. I know they really like to hang out at that spot as well and all over Clark Island. So those are just a few thoughts, kind of running down the memo that I sent you guys previously. But I'm curious to hear thoughts that you have, if you had questions. I think you had delayed your discussion until we could be here in person, so.
I for one would like to see it continue. Just my personal feeling is because of the fish and the habitat that it can provide to expand what we have. We have a very good smallmouth fishery. There's northern and musky that are also in this section of the river. So there's quite a bit there and quite a bit of predatory fish. So there's quite a bit there and quite a bit of predatory fish, you know. And if there isn't a place for the fry to hide, the bass will go away. And you know, the state put in a slot limit, I don't know, probably 20 years ago, and anything 15 inches or smaller, you can't keep. And that doesn't say that people don't do that, but the idea is there to try to promote better fishery. I know some people don't like the way it looks, but to me, the benefit that it provides, just like you talk about, you know, a naturalized garden of, you know, indigenous plants, you don't end up with something that everybody likes the look of it, because some of it just looks like weeds. And some of the weeds really do have really nice-looking flowers on them. But I think in this case, it's something that we as the city need to manage. It's kind of a hand we were dealt during bridge construction, that that's how that little, you know, spot got created. And, you know, I really feel like it's an opportunity for us to do something that benefits not only that, but, you know, the fish, but also it provides sport, you know, another reason to utilize the river.
So first off, welcome Batavia. We have a half-billion-dollar data center and weeds on the island in the same agenda. So thank you for that. So my question really is, in this lack of my knowledge, how big an area are we talking? Because we say like we have natives versus weeds, talking an acre, half an acre?
It's small.
It would fit in this room to meet the Rock Island.
Right.
Turn around, Jim. Got a picture for you.
He's got a photo there.
Okay. So is this something that you would normally handle? So I think the concern around the aesthetics is simply because somebody had willed us some money to kind of, to manage Clark Island, right? And there's probably an impression.
No, I got that wrong.
There's no funding. I just want to make a distinction between the water willows are planted along the shoreline, and we're not talking about eliminating, eliminating the water willows is like off the table, was the feedback that I got from everyone. The question is, the rest of the island is covered with like kind of just a mishmash of whatever has grown in the gravel. And so the alternatives are just mowing that area down so that it is low vegetation, hiring V3 to come in and do whatever type of vegetation that you would like to see there as opposed to what's growing there now, removing the non-native invasive species and replacing it with something that you would like to see there that is aesthetically pleasing. Right now, we're just letting it run wild because, well, one of the reasons is it's not ours to maintain, but we can decide to take responsibility for it. And there is no budget for that, so we would include that as an additional funding in future budgets to maintain that area.
Yes, and I think our position, obviously, keep the water willows that we've planted. And again, totally definitely recognize, appreciate that you guys have had that on top of mind. I think we would advocate for allowing vegetation to grow on the rest of it, but maybe if you are going to be just mowing it or, you know, the V3 proposal, let's manage it for four species that are going to support our native ecosystem.
The rest of this story is that that island got created when we built the Wilson Street Bridge, and there was coffer dams put into the river to allow for the pouring of the arches that support the bridge going over. And so when that was accomplished, we had some folks at the city government, they're not here anymore, that came up with the idea, and I think Alderman Wolf and I talked at the last meeting. He and I were the only two on the council when this kind of got hashed around a little bit, that we would, you know, allow for something to be done down there that would be a bit unique, and instead of taking the coffer dams that had been built in the river out, we would allow them to just float down the river, and most of the rock would sink into the bottom, and you wouldn't see it anymore. Well, unfortunately, that didn't come out that way, because where that, my island is, there's I believe a city water line and a city sewer line that are in the riverbed, and that island sits on top of it. But most interestingly, there's a third line, and you can go down and kind of see where that is, because on both banks of the river, Northern Illinois Gas has a big pipe coming up that identifies where that pipe is that connects going across the river. So 20 years ago, whenever this was, I was subject to a meeting with Northern Illinois Gas. And let me just say, they were not happy that this island had been created and it's overtaken their pipe that's in the middle of the river there. And they were of the suggestion, they said, well, I guess we're not going to do anything about it at the moment, but the day may very well come when we're going to need to either repair or replace that pipe. And when that day comes, we're probably going to have to take that island out, and it'll disappear. So I would suggest that all of us sit here, that's not any promise that that's going to be there forever, that that could be disappear whenever the gas company decides that they need to replace that line that goes across the river, because apparently that's a major feature in delivering natural gas to the homes of Batavia.
Yeah.
So just so we all know that, I don't have any problems in trying to decorate it up for a while, but you know, don't get disappointed if suddenly someday there's a bunch of machinery down there, and they're taking that island out to get to that gas line, because they're, they may have to replace the whole line, as they told me. So, and they don't know when that would be, and this is almost 20 years ago now. And I would think maybe we may be getting nearer to a time when that gas line's going to need work.
Yeah, and we're aware of that, and we understand that. I would also offer, I'm not an engineer, I guess this is kind of my thought, is that that Rock Island gravel bar is probably also offering some amount of erosion control and protection to that north point of Clark Island. It would just get blasted by floodwaters other way, and it's already been reinforced by, you know, concrete, stone blocks, whatever it is. But just another consideration that it is actually providing some protection to Clark Island. And I don't know, another engineer wants to speak if it's protecting those utility lines at all either. Again, I'm not an engineer, just kind of thoughts that I've ruled over, but.
The utility lines are there, and they've been there for many, many, many years. The one thing that was mentioned earlier, when Philip B. Elstrom, who owned the property across the street here, when he passed away, he left in his will a very large sum of money. His vision was, is that all the properties on the west side of South River Street from where the Comedy Vault stops, going all the way down to the Little League Park, that all those would be bought, and all the houses that are there would be tore down to open up a great, beautiful view of the Fox River, because he thought with Clark Island and all the other stuff that's there, that really makes a very nice picture of Batavia. And so he left the money, and there's still, I know there's still money to buy. There's I believe four houses left that have not yet been purchased. And the plan is that that, those someday will be purchased, and that will be turned into a much larger park, which a lot of it's right there already, and the Park District is already dedicated that park to Phil Elstrom's name and says it's his vision. So I mean, he was a friend of mine, and I was, I spoke at his funeral, and I was with him when he died and all this other good stuff. But he really had a passion for making that South River area very pretty. He said the potential is there to make it one of the brightest spots on the entire length of the Fox River. And so I don't know if this contributes much to that or not, but that's kind of the plan of the thing, that it will be something that will be very, very popular with a lot of people.
I was just going to add on to that, that when you're putting in the native species along the riverbank there, it's also increasing the health of the river, which increases the beauty of the river. If you're removing native plants from the river, all you're going to see is all that bacteria and duckweed starting to form, things that you don't necessarily want growing over there, which is going to take away the beauty of the riverfront. So you can continue to add in more native species that will help with the management of that while helping the health of it.
As more of those houses on the west-east side of the river come down, you'll have more bank to probably put stuff on. So I'm not arguing anything you're saying. It's just kind of a work in progress, if you will, and it all depends on when certain things happen. And the vision was put on the table by Elstrom, and he threw the money on the table to accomplish it. So the money's there to do it. So we'll see where, how it all ends up.
Mayor?
Is the direction from City Council then to work with V3 to come up with a proposal to replace the non-native invasive species with native species and bring that proposal back to City Council so that that can be included in the 2026 budget?
I'd like to see that, yeah. I don't see anybody saying no.
I'd also like to know what the maintenance, and maintenance, I mean, and wondering if it could just be incorporated with the riverbank. I assume we have a maintenance plan for the riverbank stabilization plantings that went in this year, and if it could be incorporated into that contract into the future.
We would have that three-year M&amp;M. I could talk to Rahad about it to see who that is. Otherwise, it could be bumped in with V3. That's, we're doing those as three-year cycles.
Did you have a, did you have a question, Leah?
No, it was actually, I was going to say exactly what Laura said, so. Okay.
I would just say my view is, it sounds like nobody wants to take responsibility for this thing. We know it came from a construction project that our city did. Somebody's got to step up and do something about it, and why not beautify it if we're going to, you know, because I think it's going to be too costly to remove. So let's make it pretty and do it the right way. That would be my direction. And I think this is what we've just seen happen. Everything at a reasonable cost, please. With what happened up at Carpenter'sville, they, when they took their dam out, they exposed a bunch of pipes that they had to reroute, and I don't see this being a whole lot different than that. Nycor knows that they have to reroute it, and they're probably going to find either the cheapest way to reroute it or the easiest route, one of the two, and that's what they would probably choose to do when they replace it. I don't think that's on us, you know. It's their infrastructure, and they do it all the time. They're out there doing, you know, billion dollars now. So I think, I'm not worried about that. More worried about our 20-inch Crosstown Water Main. That's the one I worry about.
Yeah, those are all factors in the game, and, you know, if something happens to that, we, the city, would have to go out there and probably take a lot of that island away. So I mean, I just would hope that people wouldn't think that this is a long-lasting attribute to downtown Batavia. It would be nice if it could be, but I don't think it will be, given the volatility that lays underneath it there with three different utility lines, especially that gas line, which they seem to be very heavy-duty concerned about, that they could get in there and take that out and change it if they had to. And the only way to do it would be to take that, most of that island out. And you can go down there and look at those, the two areas where the gas company's got it marked, where they're going into the river on both the east and the west bank, and you can see exactly where that's going, right underneath that island, so.
You know, before I leave this, if I was a viewer watching this, and I heard that the area was, could fit in this room, and I know the quote from V3 was, what, 7,000, around there, 9,000?
Sixty-four.
It was what?
Sixty-four hundred.
Sixty-four hundred. My first question would be, why is this not a work order from the Park District or the work order from the Public Works Department, just to either mechanically take down the weeds or just manage the property? Do we have an answer to that, or it's just because nobody owns it?
Just because we don't own it.
Okay.
And it's super high visibility. From the entire length of that park, from the bridge, anywhere you walk around on downtown, you can see it. And I think that's something that, you know, we've talked about how much of a, you know, asset the river is and how we want to treat it better, how we want to take care of it. This is part of that.
And I'll also comment that I think that across the board, across the governing bodies, both Park District and the city too, you know, we just haven't had an emphasis or an investment in native plantings and those kinds of naturalized areas. It's not the Park District's focus. Different Park Districts have different levels of investment. Kim Hansen over there does a great job, but it doesn't have the energy and investment that their programmable spaces and their rec stuff does, the natural areas or not. So it's something I think new for the city across all jurisdictions. And I think with proposing a naturalized area over here along City Hall, the stabilization that we did was a great investment. I think this will be a nice introduction carriage crest rehab as well. We're starting to dip our toe in there. I think it will require a bit more community education, a bit more elected education, and a bit more investment in the future. And I think it's a really good thing to get started, and thank you for continuing to push it from the Environmental Commission.
Yeah, no problem.
I think this was the next item on the agenda, I think yours, anyway.
We just want to stay right into it.
So thank you for letting us get through that. Appreciate it.
No problem. Okay, I think that's it for us on our updates. Like I said, we did have some questions and comments, thoughts about the data centers. So if you'd rather us, I know Main Street Minute is next, if you'd rather us come back.
Let me just do that all at once.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we've handled item 10, the discussion of vegetation gravel bar on the north of Clark Island. And the next thing is Main Street, and our executive director is here. You're having a very successful summer.
Yeah, it's been good. All right, thanks so much for having me. I'm going to get this set up. All right, so this Saturday, we have our annual fundraiser, Cocktails in the Park. There's a couple new items we're adding. We're doing a silent auction this year, and we have some great items. We have two front row seats to the Chicago Bulls home game. Those are dates to be determined. We have a King County Cougars 20 tickets and a VIP box package, as well as four tickets, a jersey, and a Chicago Steels cap. So those are some exciting items. We also have 12 different raffle baskets that you can bid on at the event. Or if you're not able to attend, you can buy tickets online and let us know what you want to put your raffle ticket in for. But tickets are on sale right now for Cocktails in the Park. They're $40 each, or $50 at the door. And then raffle tickets are $8. Raffle and drink tickets are interchangeable. They're $8 apiece, or you can buy a package of 10 for $75. But again, tickets are $40 to Cocktails in the Park, and that includes appetizers from 11 different restaurants, as well as live music and a great atmosphere. We did Boo Boo Days last weekend. That's really kind of a throwback to how, to an event that used to happen in the 50s and 60s and 70s. We had 20-plus businesses participating, as well as eight different restaurants offering vintage-inspired menu, drink items. We had eight, we printed off eight of these large-scale ads from the 50s and 60s, and we put those in vacant windows just to kind of create some continuity between the town. So that was a fun event, and we hope to continue to grow that program over the years. We did a construction project over at the Boardwalk Shops. We had some wooden decking that was starting to warp, and we decided to expand the patio. So we chose some brick pavers. We tried to match what the city's doing to try and continue to create continuity throughout the downtown district. But that expands our patio, little elevated feel, so we're really happy how that turned out. We have been working on our website to increase our SEO rating, as well as create some evergreen content. Social media posts really only have a lifespan of 48 hours. Once they're in somebody's feed, they don't come back. But if you create blogs, blogs will, you can Google a search, and that content will come up. So we're working to do things like, we show up really well if somebody's looking for Batavia or if they say downtown Batavia, but we don't always show up well when you're looking for Tri-Cities or the Fox Valley. So we're really trying to add those words into our verbiage on our website to increase that Google search. And we added a business resource page, which has a link to the city, as well as ways that Main Street can support the downtown businesses. And then we had another segment on Chicago Television. We were on WGN last Sunday. It was a great segment. It had several spots during the morning hour. And then that was repackaged and presented, shown on the Five and Nine News, so that was exciting. And then one of our former Boardwalk Shops, Home Run Hot Dogs and Lemonades, opened their brick and mortar shop a couple, like I think last week. brick and mortar shop a couple, like, I think, last week in Yorkville. So that's just really exciting to see that program have people graduate into brick and mortar. So that's all I have for you. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
Obviously, we tried, but we couldn't land them here.
Say this again?
They went to Yorkville?
Yeah. I mean, we would love to see more come in. We just don't have the small-scale spots that people can go into. You know, it's something hopefully we'll be working on. We have some things that we're going to be applying for in the upcoming year to work on those types of issues. I've already talked to Laura about it. It's a program called Recast Your Leaders, and it's a cohort that meets with a national group, and they help you try and pinpoint your issues in your downtown district, and then try and resolve those with quick, actionable items. So we're working on our application. That program wouldn't start until next year, but we are looking towards the future and to see what we can do to keep those businesses here, because they really do want to stay. It's just that not a lot of people want a 10,000-square-foot space, so.
Other questions? Comments?
Every week I have to try and remember how to log out of this. I apologize. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Laura? Are you taking item 12?
Yes. So this is resolution 2025-82-R, authorizing execution of a master service agreement with Batavia DC Corp. This is the data center discussion from last Tuesday's meeting. I think one of the primary areas of discussion and some of the feedback that we've been receiving from the community are concerns over the amount of water that the facility would use. And through further discussions with the developer, they have committed to a waterless solution, utilizing air-cooled chillers and not cooling towers. And so that significantly reduces the amount of water that they would use on a daily basis, frankly, to a similar, what a residential customer would use, just over 100 gallons per day. And Chris Vickery is here in person to answer any additional questions that she might have. And as well, I think that he has also people online who can also answer any questions that you have.
When looking stuff up, just doing simple searches, I found several different, I will say, sizes of these. And depending on what they are and depending on what type of cooling systems they use, completely changed, to me, the complexity of what those buildings are. This looks like it's more towards the smaller end size of these. I think some of it's technology-driven, that, you know, stuff they're using in there today doesn't have to have, you know, three times the space that it did 10 years ago. And then I wanted to make comment, because I've seen, you know, social media, a lot of people complaining about, okay, if they're going to put in a diesel generator or natural gas generator so that they have backup power source on their property, whatever that is has to meet the regulations that each one of the generators that we have at our sites all over town.
Right.
So, you know, it would meet the same emissions standards. It's just like saying, oh, I'm going to go out and buy a new car. You're not going to buy one that, you know, doesn't have the emissions equipment on it. That it's.
A noise standard as well.
Right. And that's another thing to point out, that noise standard. One of the ones that was sent to me by somebody was, I think it's in Tennessee, its generation system to generate its own power is methane. So yes, it's a renewable resource for them, because of where they're located, but it's not clean. And it has, you know, the other side effects. That's nothing like we're going to have here on this. And one of the other things is, I read, you know, the comments that this is getting rushed, this is getting pushed through. This has been something the city's been talking about for 10 years, to try to find an electric user like this, a data center. The investment in what that building is worth and what that generates in property taxes, you know, is is big, as well as, you know, the money that would be generated from this master services agreement for the city and the electric utility. And the electric utility would be the one that would assume the $18 or $20 million reimbursement, correct?
That's correct. It would be reimbursed out of the revenues generated by the project and overall.
From the utility, not from general fund.
That is correct.
Correct. And that's something I wanted to separate, so that the public knows that that's part of this. I take very seriously every contract we talk about when we go to a market price agreement with a large user. I'm the one person on this council, other than the mayor, that was here when we got into Prairie State. So I try to, you know, I'll call it, I'm trying to make up for the bad judgment that we had or the bad information we had back then. But we have to look at all the opportunities that are out there for our city, and this is one of them. The other question I have, and I didn't, sorry, I didn't get this earlier, is this in Batavia School District or Geneva School District? I don't know where the border is out there.
Yes.
I believe it is Batavia, and that's the other thing. You know, from the property tax side, that's money that's going into the school district without any load to the school district. So that's another thing that we think about, or at least I think about, when I look at what kind of investment somebody's willing to make in our industrial park.
Right.
And I'm really happy to see that they're going with a different system, so that it's, yeah, it's 450,000 gallons of water to start with, but then that system stays closed. I don't know how often they change that, but, you know, that's something that we can provide there with, I think, without having to upgrade our system.
That's not, that's not in play anymore.
What?
There's no need for 450,000 gallons of water anymore.
Oh, they're going air-to-air or water-to-air? I thought you still had to have something to be your heat exchange medium.
They do have to load the system with water.
Yeah.
I'll clear it up. Yeah, so the air-cooled chillers, you're right, so it's a 450,000-gallon need to fill up the system. A good way to think about it is like the cooling system on your car, right? You fill up the radiator with fluid, then you don't refill it again for a very long time. Same here. The frequency of change is about every 2,000 days. It's multiple years before you do it again. 450,000 gallons is 2/3 the size of an Olympic swimming pool, filling it up once.
I have a question. When you change out that water, what do you do with it? Where does that go?
All right, well, that would go to you guys, but it would be, but it would all come out at city specs, right? I mean, essentially drinking water, and then it would go to the wastewater treatment facility. I assume that's being upgraded right now.
Okay.
Yep.
So it would be within the regulations, what we require?
100%, right.
For the water for any discharge?
100%. Look, at the end of the day, I mean, we still have to get a building permit issued by you guys, right? And so everything we do, all the engineering that we do ahead of time, is going to have to meet all your city specs. Yep.
I can also comment on this. Hello, everyone. Not sure if you can hear me. Had to call in, but I'm Riley Tredle. I was here last week for the review of this project. I work with Chris Vickery, and quite a more on the design and engineering side. The actual loop fill, it is done with the purest deionized water that we can get. So we'll take delivery, we'll do reverse osmosis on it, we will fill the loop. And then, as Chris mentioned, every 2,000 days, that will be drained and refilled. That is pure water. The reason that we do the drain and refill is because it's per requirements that are industry standard. We have to do borescope tests, where all of our pipes are examined. And so we don't, we could theoretically leave the water in there for 50 years if we wanted to. And then, again, it's pure water, but we have borescope tests where we go in and make sure that everything is is looking good on the inside. That's the only reason that it gets changed out. So hopefully that gives you a little bit more comfort on the discharge.
Thanks, Riley.
Yes, go. Yeah. Can you, can you clarify the closed system, closed-loop system and the air chiller system? Because of how I was understanding it, they could work together, but they're different. So if you could just explain that a little bit clearer.
They do work together. Riley, if you're still there, you're probably the right guy for it.
Yeah, absolutely. So again, Chris used a pretty good analogy there. It is very similar to the radiator in your car. So there is what we call the main facility loop. That's a closed loop. So 450,000 gallons gets loaded, it's sealed up, and then that water goes around in circles, getting hot, and then getting cooled down by the air-cooled chillers over and over for years. And so that water is sent into the facility, filled. It goes through liquid-to-liquid heat exchangers, so these big metal plates that are basically like the inside of a car radiator. Those have water that go directly to the servers or to liquid-to-air heat exchangers that provide cold air to the servers. And then the heat that's pulled out of those heat exchangers that comes directly from the servers then circulates outside to the chiller plant, where it's cooled down, almost identical to how a residential air conditioning unit works. So there is a closed loop inside the air-cooled chiller, which uses a, like an AC condenser loop, to pull the heat out of that water and exhaust it into the air. Then that chilled water is sent back into the facility, and the process starts again. So that facility loop that we're talking about just circulates from picking up heat from the computers to getting refrigerated, and then back inside the facility. So then, inside the facility itself, there are much, there are a bunch of little, much smaller loops that are de minimis volume, that circulate to either directly liquid-cooled servers, or that cooled-down air that is continually recirculated inside the facility to provide cold air to the computers. So I hope that that helps.
Yes, thanks. And then you mentioned that air would be leaving the facility. With that air, what temperature is that air leaving the facility?
Yeah, so the air that leaves the facility is going to leave the facility at about 70C out of the top of the air-cooled chillers. Now, I appreciate we don't live in Europe, so it's about 165 degrees Fahrenheit. So that will be exhausted out of the top of the building, and that will exhaust the entire heat load of the IT equipment of the data center. So that will be 36 megawatts of heat.
Okay. And then that number, the 450,000 gallons that you fill up once, there isn't an additional number of water needed for the air chiller, right? Like, that works together, like you said, the closed loop and the air chiller. So that's all the water we're talking about. And then you said, every day, 100 gallons per day that would be used, right?
Yeah, faucets, toilets, stuff like that.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Omen Farimbaka, you have some?
Yeah, we had a question around the workloads that were going to be there. I know last time we said we were going to have co-located data center operations, not Bitcoin mining, and stuff like that. Could you talk more about that? And keep in mind, people do Google away when they when they get a firm's names. So we had the name American Bitcoin come up as a company. This is not part of that, correct? Okay. Could you talk about your relationship with American Bitcoin as well?
Yeah, it's a, so it's a, it's a subsidiary that we are a partial owner of. It's a, it's a separately, it's a, going to be a, oh, that's it. I mean, it's a separately traded, it's a separate, separate organization that we are a part-owner of. It is exclusively operates in the crypto mining space. It has nothing to do with this side of our business.
And this facility we're talking about has nothing to do with that at all?
Nothing to do with it.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, this facility is, it's, it doesn't have any of the attributes that are attractive for crypto mining.
So to be clear on that, so it is too expensive to mine Bitcoin at this facility versus other facilities that you have, is that correct?
Correct. It's also fairly small.
Okay.
Yeah.
Omen, you have?
I think you kind of answered it. I was just not clear on how you would be certain that it wouldn't be used for AI or crypto. Like, are you, I understand that the companies that would want your space would look for something bigger, right? Are you, how are you soliciting them? I guess, I guess I'm just trying to understand more on how for sure that wouldn't happen there.
How for sure that it would not be AI, you mean?
Right.
Yeah. So like I said, a crypto mining facility here would absolutely lose money, bar none. It would not be a responsible investment for any organization who is not in the business of losing money. From the AI standpoint, it really comes down to size. It's just the types of facilities that are attractive to the hyperscaler-type clients, the Googles, the Metas, the Microsofts of the world, 200 to 300 megawatts minimum, and really, it's 1,000 megawatts plus for it to be an attractive facility to them. This just, it doesn't have a shot. It's just far too small.
Just to labor on that one, can you comment on, now, from my, from my understanding, Hut 8, I think you had, what, 339 Bitcoins mined last year or something like that? Around there?
I don't know the number off the top of my head.
The point is, the amount of compute required to mine a Bitcoin now is extraordinary versus, like, 20 years ago, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So when people are thinking that a data center that we're talking about in Batavia could even approach a workload and even get there in 20 years is not even.
You could, I mean, look, you could certainly put Bitcoin mining computers, ASIC chips, there. The problem is, you would spend much more money than you would recoup in revenue from mining a Bitcoin.
I get that. I just want to make sure that people get that.
Yeah.
It makes almost no financial sense at all.
Not almost. It's not even close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor?
I think what I, what I want to add to this conversation is, a lot of the customers that would find a place like this and why it is booming is business continuity. A lot of companies are taking their servers off-site. Some of it is required by their insurance companies, but it's also business continuity, because if something were to happen to their building and their servers were there, they wouldn't be able to keep moving. But with their servers off-site and these type of facilities, that allows them to continue to keep their business going. That is why this is such a booming industry, because a lot of it is a requirement by big, medium, and small companies. Also, you've seen the vast increase of using our phones, doing digital transactions, financial transactions. This is not anything that's new to the US. The EU, which is completely cashless, I mean, they do have cash, but most of their transactions are cashless. They are dealing with a lot of these same issues and concerns, because it has been such a booming industry.
Just to add on that, so business continuity is part of it, but the driver is the cost to serve. It's now cheaper to actually have your, your infrastructure hosted by somebody else and try to do it yourself, right? And part of it is the compute level required now. You don't necessarily want to have the, the costs, the sunk costs in trying to build that out yourself. You can rent, time-share infrastructure from other folks and just have it done better, faster, cheaper. And more importantly, they're going to work on optimize the power, they're going to work on optimizing the cooling, they're going to work on optimizing everything for you, so you don't have to try to take that on yourself. So the cost to serve is now so low for everyday compute loads, the people are leveraging these facilities.
Omen?
I had a question about the data center use of the water driving up the residence rates. I had sent this question, and everybody on council saw the response that Laura gave. But now, given the information that we now know that they're going to do the closed-loop system, so my question again to you is, with that system in place, and the water not being as, as much water being used as we thought, or we weren't sure, your response was yes, that resident rates would increase potentially? So does that still remain with this number of water?
That was using 644,000 gallons per day. So this system using 110 gallons per day, even with the having to charge the system once every 2,000 days, will not have an impact on residential rates.
Okay. And then my next question about water, when I was asking about water... When I was asking about water supply and what it looked like for our aquifers, our current supply now in the short term and what it would look like in the long term, I was curious as to what percentage of an increase that would be having the data center, you know, use it. And you sent us a report. It was 174 pages, so I was not able to look at that before this meeting. So I'm just wondering if you can just give us an idea.
Sure. And I'll be happy to provide you with, there is a PowerPoint that is a summary of that report. So I'm sorry I did not include that with it. That'd probably be very helpful to folks. But what it did say was that in 10 years' time, from the time that the master plan was published, which was 2017, and we're near approaching that time, that the next 10-year plan, we would anticipate identifying an option for an additional water source. Now, what has changed in that intervening period of time is there are a number of larger communities who are coming off of our aquifer. And so that also has to be brought into the calculus. So you've got Joliet, who has come off and is now utilizing Lake Michigan. And then you've got the three communities of Yorkville, Oswego, and Montgomery, who are now collaborating on coming off of that aquifer and getting their drinking water from Lake Michigan as well. And so we'll...
Follow-up to that.
Sure.
So it's my understanding that they're coming off of the aquifer because, for fear of depletion. So with that in mind, it gives me pause, right? Because our aquifers are going to be utilized more with the data center. I understand it's once, once every 2,000 days, but I still want to know, you know, what, what impact that has.
So I can, I can tell you that on a daily basis, the city of Batavia utilizes 2.8 million gallons per day. So that you can see that one, and it wouldn't even be one day, at 425,000, that would be spread over several days. And so I think that significantly reduces the impact from, you know, what we were discussing last week of 644,000 gallons per day. Will this be, have to be factored in? Answer yes, but it's pales in comparison to what we were talking about last week.
Sure, I get that.
And it's, it's worth mentioning that. So we talk about water recovery, like where it makes sense to invest. Quite frankly, we lose so much water through the quarry. It's unbelievable. So that'd be like my number-one thing. We talk about saving water around here. Let's fix the quarry pool. That's number one. Secondly...
Jeremy would love for me to make a plug for all of us conserving water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, but, but we do have to have a water discussion because in fact, it is, we're on Aquafire, right?
You will, you will see that in the 2026 budget to get that project off the ground so that we'll have a new master plan by 2027.
And just to go with the quarry example one more, even the one-time fill every 2,000 days, that's 3/4 of the water that takes to fill up an Olympic pool, which takes 625, right? So, so it's within the, the rational, like, mindset of increased water usage. However, I do like that we're talking about water conservation because water shortages are coming, quite frankly, thanks to climate change, if you want to go there. But we have bigger fish to fry if we're talking about water conservation.
Can I make a point of order? I don't think Alice was done with her statement yet.
Can I clarify one thing quickly? The 450,000 gallons also isn't directly coming from the aquifer. Like Riley said, this is like purely deionized water. It'll be trucked in. It's, we're not taking from the city in that scenario.
Oh, thanks for clarifying. So every 2,000 days, you're going to truck in water? Okay, that changes things. Okay, so it's, we're just talking about the 100 gallons per day then that you're using from Batavia. Okay. Done with the water. I'll have more questions about other things.
Leah, do you have a question?
I have thoughts, but Abby has her hand up first. In our meeting last week, well, first I want to say, I understand that staff has been working with this company, which I'm a little confused. Are we calling it Hut 8 or Batavia DC Corp? Or is this the same? You can explain that.
Batavia DC Corp. is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Hut 8. It's the, it's the entity that will build and own this project.
Okay, thank you. So I understand that staff has been working with you for a while and you all have your minds wrapped around this. But for us on City Council, this is pretty new and it was presented very recently to us and same with our residents. So please understand that that's where we're coming from. And, you know, especially for a project this large, maybe some more time, an introduction would have been nice before being like, can you make a decision and a vote right away? Because I, I think that's where a lot of us are at right now is feeling a little pressured into a vote with a very short timeline. But thank you for the assurance that it won't be a Bitcoin-mining facility. I know that that was on the mind, the minds of a lot of people. And when we read in the news about a lot of these data centers that have large environmental impacts, I know, I realize it's often a larger data center that is doing the Bitcoin-mining. So hopefully, this will have a smaller environmental footprint as that is a concern. I think my largest concern right now, and I brought this up in last week's meeting, was the impact it will have to Batavia's power grid and our electric utility. Because I, I, I think it's possible that we could see the data center reach the 50 megawatts pretty quickly and not feeling quite assured that we will be in a, a good spot as a city with our electric utility, that we would feel good about maybe the strain that it would put until we have the opportunity to build our infrastructure. So my question is, is there a chance we could put a cap on how quickly they can scale up to 50 megawatts? Like, four to five years, you know? That way, we can get our infrastructure in place and be as stable as possible.
Realize that the, if they get to 50 megawatts faster, that we're also realizing the revenue that's associated with the 50 megawatts as well. But it is a concern. And that's why we're sending our letter to ComEd this week asking, you know, for the additional 50 megawatts because that's the only way that ComEd is going to come back to us and tell us how much those improvements cost. Back when we put in that node, it required also all of the infrastructure on which the pie line, on which all of those wires sit. So there is a chance that we've got the two wires coming in. And if we're talking about drawing a third wire, it may not have, be as expensive as it was when we first did it. But we, we don't have any idea what this number is because we're, it's reliance upon ComEd to tell us what their price is for increasing this. So that's definitely something that we have to keep in mind. And that's additionally why we should take the initial revenues that come from this project and be saving against, you know, deciding, when ComEd tells us what the number is, that's what we should put away in the event that we need to talk about making that adjustment.
So personally, I feel like we are being asked to move forward with a vote tonight without having some answers about what ComEd's response is going to be. And that makes me a little uncomfortable. And in, you know, Dustin brought this up last week, in light of if they did get to 50 megawatts in, let's say, two years, and we still are just running on our three transformers and something happens, it just puts us in a very unstable situation. And I don't feel comfortable with that with, for our electric utility and for our residents and our other corporations and industrial users in Batavia. So I would like to see if we can discuss, can we ramp up to that 50 megawatts as we prepare? And I understand the financial side of that, but trying to be risk averse here, so.
I can model some of those scenarios for you.
Could I say one thing in response to that? So Steve, I don't want to speak for you, so please chime in if you disagree with anything that I'm saying here. So the, certainly hear where you're coming from, very much. We've spent the better part of a year working with, you know, Steve and Gary and now Laura, right? The cost of the infrastructure needed to serve this facility, right? We prepay for, and the city then spends the money that we have given, right? And that gets the, the physical infrastructure in place to serve this facility, right? So I, I hope that that, and I, I hope that that serves some to help with the concern you're talking about there. There's a separate piece of this. If we're talking about, if we're talking about delaying this, the, this is not, I hope you don't hear this the wrong way. This is in no way intended to be interpreted as any sort of a threat or anything like that. It is not. It is just a sheer fact. We will get into a situation where the facility maybe can't happen because we will lose access to the other necessary pieces of, it's a puzzle piece to put a $1.5 billion facility together. And we will maybe lose access to a scarce resource that makes this facility impossible in much less than a month. And so I certainly hear you. I just want to put that out there so folks know that the, the entire facility will become very much jeopardized in that scenario.
Alman back?
Leah took a lot of the comments out of my mouth. I wanted to just reiterate to and to thank our residents that have been writing in and paying attention to this. I know there's a number of residents here that are looking to speak on this too, and I'm looking forward to your questions. I want to, I think Alice has done a great job organizing a lot of these thoughts that I share, the questions I share. I know that different people at this table have different experiences with this topic that are seeped in this every day, feel very comfortable with all this conversation. I feel more and more comfortable the more I hear you speak myself. But I have sat through now many hours of these conversations. I've spent many hours reading. I've signed up for that privilege of having to do hours of reading on a topic I didn't know about before. Our residents don't have that luxury all the time. They don't have that time. They don't have that space. They don't have this background. My background and my education is studying why companies lie to governments to pollute the environment. So I'm coming at it from a very different angle than other people at this table. So I just want to make sure we're being courteous and gracious to the people that have questions, the people that are nervous and the people that want more information, the people that want more time to absorb some of this. I'm curious if a two-week break to put together a fact sheet, put together all the answers that have been provided to us over the past week into one cohesive place to show the residents that we've done our due diligence, that we've gotten our questions answered, give people more time to submit their questions? This is a big, this is a big discussion and this is a big topic for our city and it's one week of talking. I know you've been talking about it for a year. I know that other people have been talking about it for apparently 10 years. Most of us at this table have been talking about it for less than seven days. That's not a lot of time. And I don't feel bad and I won't feel guilty for wanting to put a pin in it to, to allow it to settle a little bit longer. So a few things that I would like answers to or to be part of that consideration specifically as well. Grateful for the information about the water, grateful for the more efficient water system. And maybe this is part of just a larger water conversation, but being able as a city to put caps on usage for those large users as we look at our supply. And also looking at some transparency pieces that we can place on new industries or existing industries. Obviously, we've had some problems with this over the past year in our waterways. But having regular reporting, regular testing, regular reporting on emissions that are coming out of the business of the water that's being flown into our rivers and streams so that we are abating, hopefully, any problems, but then also providing some assurance to our nervous residents. We know we have nervous residents about this project that we will catch something and be able to mitigate it quickly. So those are my two asks. And look forward to the other questions and the concerns from our residents that we can listen to and try to answer. And if we can't answer them tonight and we can't bring that level of comfort up to everybody, then I would, I would move to table it and, and approve it at another City Council meeting.
So we absolutely can put caps on the amount of water used. We could also charge people an excess fee for, if they happen to be large water users. As for transparency and testing of water, I think what you're describing is a pre-treatment program. And that may be something that the city of Batavia should look into, not just for data centers, but all industrial users in the city that discharge wastewater from their processes into our sewage system.
Just one thing to add on that. On the, on the environmental side, the backup generation that can only be, really only used in emergencies is subject to EPA Tier IV regulations. It's stricter than the regulations for a truck, right? And it will be used next to never. On the water side, like I said, right? All of that has to meet city code, city standards. We'll test it. It will be tested. I don't think anything you've just requested is not just part of the plan already.
I have a comment to what, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Chris, you just talked about the backup generator. Is it possible, and you just mentioned that it would only be used in the event of an emergency. Is it possible to add that language to our agreement? That... Yes? Okay, that it would just be used for testing or emergencies?
Yeah, it's part of our requirement in the, in the contract.
So we can add it, okay.
No, it, it doesn't have to be added. It's in there.
It's already there.
It's already in.
Oh, okay, sorry. Laura, your response was, I didn't understand it from that, your response. Okay, thank you. Let me see. I think for the generator, I'm okay right now. Oh, another question I had about the e-waste management that I didn't receive any information on. What is Hut 8's plan for the recycling and disposal of e-waste generated by your facility?
Yes, it actually comes down to the tenants, right? So the way, I think we talked about this last week a bit. Like, the, the way this works is, you know, we develop the project, we build the, the infrastructure. And then the servers and the actual GPUs, all of that stuff is brought by the tenants. It's their own equipment. And then they have their own e-waste programs, right? I mean, the, what you would expect for almost anyone willing to, or not willing to, that needs compute of this nature has ESG programs and protocols in place for themselves already and their e-waste would follow those ESG protocols.
There's no way for you to regulate it or...
Well, so the kind of order of operations here, right? Without us knowing we have electricity, we can't get customers. And so without being able to get customers, I can't tell you what the customer's ESG protocols are. The other part of that order of operations is, right? What we're talking about here is the agreement to build the infrastructure and serve the electricity. We can't break ground on this facility without a building permit issuance, right? You'll have to be right back here in this room, I imagine, for that process. At that time, many more of these questions are known because we have, we know that we have a document that says we can be served with electricity, which means we can go get customers. The difficulty with some of the back-and-forth in these questions is that as long as we're just hanging out with a, maybe you got electricity, there, there is no customer conversation that can happen with any real specificity to it, right?
I understand. I think it was just helpful to get an understanding on, you know, where you stood on this. I don't want to kick the can down the road, you know, if I'm not comfortable either, right? So I appreciate you answering to the best of your knowledge. I don't have any questions right now.
Alvin Fairbach?
So to Alderman, Alderman Beck's point about pausing for more questions, that gives the impression that there won't be more opportunity for more questions regardless of the vote tonight, right? So we talk about what the additional opportunities for questions would be as part of this process? So for instance, if somebody came in from the public and said, hey, you know, whether we voted, let's say we have the vote tonight, okay? And it is what it is, and then somebody from the public has a question they want to answer for.
It will be answered.
Okay. And if they want to ask Hut Eight, Hut Eight will be there, right? And there will be another, from here goes the Planning Commission, correct? Or goes to who?
Scott's gonna answer questions on process. There's a few steps in the process.
I was gonna try and sneak out, but I can't. The, it depends on what the actual plan is going to be. If they don't need variances for setbacks or other zoning relief, all it will be is a design review approval, which would go just to the Plan Commission. It would end at that point. Once the Plan Commission approves design review, it would then go to the building permit, and then we'd just issue a building permit. So there really would not be much more input publicly as part of the project unless it involves variances.
Variances we won't know about until it goes to Planning Commission, is that correct?
Well, variances we'd know once we have an actual site plan. So I mean, the concept plan they gave us, you know, the last meeting, it doesn't have dimensions on it, so we can't review it for setbacks and other zoning relief or not.
One comment on that, right? So we are subject to kind of HOA in the Batavia Business Park, whose pretty much all of their standards are more restrictive than the general industrial standard, zoning standard at this site. We've already submitted our basic plans to them, and they've given preliminary approval for it. So everything that we've given to them is, you know, more tightened up than the general industrial standard.
Alvin Piper?
Just to reiterate that, after this, assuming no variances, it will go to Plan Commission, though, for final approval, so there will still be public input there.
Just design review is all it would be, is just design review. There's no, I mean, it's a public meeting, and they would allow public comment, but, you know, it ends at the Plan Commission with design review.
But they don't have to approve it necessarily, it's just a present?
If they deny design review, then it can be appealed and brought forward to the city council, which is similar to what happened with One Washington Place.
Interesting. Okay, so the point being, there is a next step and not just?
It can be, yeah. I mean, if they approve it, then it ends at the Plan Commission.
And that's fine.
But the purview of the Plan Commission will be to look at the design, so if somebody has a problem or concerns about the usage, that is not part of the discussion at all. So this is the last time to talk about the usage of the site, the energy contract, the water usage, and all that.
Yeah, the only thing the Plan Commission's really gonna look at is the appearance of the building, the landscaping, the site plan, the layout of it. They really aren't gonna look at anything else in relation to the use, use is allowable under the zoning district, so there's no deviation from that at all.
Of course, it is not going to, it wouldn't get to the Plan Commission until after it has been reviewed by all of the internal departments, who are going to make sure that those aspects that are part of their purview are done according to our code and what we agreed upon.
I have another question for Chris, or the city, I guess both. So I had asked a question, if we could add a clause to our agreement for a periodic review, say every five to 10 years, to reassess the fairness of the market changes, triggers of performance metrics, you know, in the event environmental issues arose or economic issues, to safeguard both the data center and the city. If everything was fine, you know, keep the agreement as is. So it's my understanding that Hut Eight said that this would not be acceptable, so could you speak more to that and why we can't add a clause that would be fair for both parties?
Apologize, I'm not sure I remember a conversation where I said that. I apologize if there was some sort of misunderstanding there.
I think what she is asking is, the agreement that we have currently is perpetual, and she's asking for periods of renegotiation. So stop every five or 10 years and say, can we renegotiate the terms of that agreement?
Yeah, certainly. So again, I would address it this way. So in order to alleviate a lot of those concerns, in the negotiations we've done over the last year, what we've specifically done is make it so that the city holds no risk in price or finances, right? We bear all the risk of finding our own electrons, paying for them at whatever cost they come to us at. Every charge that come through from PJM is a straight pass through to us, zero impact to the city, and then the ECA is pure profit into the city. The only real major component there is the distribution charge, which the Brattle Group will assess and make sure is set up in such a way that the city is set up correctly on that. The, I think what I was probably, I think maybe what you were referring to is, if you have, if you add a term into the contract that essentially says the city can decide in some way, shape, or form that it's no longer going to honor it every five years or 10 years, the project's dead, like, full stop. There is no one who provides $1.5 billion into a project that has no, you can't see its future.
Oh, sorry, I just had a question. Is there a motion on the table? I thought that Abby had motioned for two weeks, no?
No motion.
You just suggested it, okay. I was just asking, I wasn't sure. And then before our vote, are we going to ask the public to speak, to continue the discussion before our vote? It's just a question. I think I'm asking the mayor.
Yes, we will.
I believe when we're done asking questions, we're gonna have public comment.
Okay, thanks.
I have an additional question for staff. Do we have any idea of how this project might impact or delay other planned city projects or downtown development projects we've started on, or things that are happening with electric utility, like basically the resources that this project might take?
Yes, I would say that it could have an impact on that. It's one of the driving reasons why we decided to just reach out to ComEd right away to find out what would be the cost of getting that extra 50 megawatts so that, and, you know, likely we're looking at a project that wouldn't start until possibly four years down the road, because ComEd already has many of these projects in the hopper that, from letters that have come before our own, right? So it's possible that it could.
Can you clarify what you meant by four, like, what will be delayed four years down the road?
ComEd will be doing, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, ComEd will be doing the upgrades that will allow us the additional 50 megawatts, we will be paying for it.
They'll be studying what they need to do.
Yes.
And they may need to do things, they may not need to do things. I don't mean to be nebulous, I just don't.
No, we just don't know at this point.
Bore you with my techno babble. But the majority of the work will be for the city, for the city's infrastructure.
Yes.
So ComEd has already agreed?
Well, what happens?
For this data center?
Sorry. So as you know, we have 150 megawatt import limit, and so the 50 megawatt request right now from Hut Eight is within that import limit. And so if we want to get, increase our import limit, you know, just like a credit card, you know, we have to, you have to apply for it. So it's the same type of load letter or application that Hut Eight or any other data center would be getting in line with, you know, if they were to connect to the bulk electric system. The advantage that we have is we're already connected. So hopefully, there is a non-zero chance that because we're just adding additional capacity, capacity's a bad word, sorry, additional import capability, I've been trying to train myself to say that, capacity's something else. We already have substations, we already have lines out to the system, so we're just adding things on our own property. And so hopefully, that makes their study a little bit easier. And hopefully, we'll know their answers, you know, in a timely manner, but it's still probably a six-month or one-year process, excuse me, process.
Alvin Lancy?
Yeah, good, good questions from everybody, as everyone's aware. I'm in this space in a number of, number of aspects of my career, but I want to thank, first of all, Chris and the Hut Eight team, and Steve and Laura and the city staff for working through this. Not easy, it's a huge investment. I just want to reiterate, you know, for some of the environmental concerns that are out there, totally get it, worthwhile to go down that path, but just know this is one of the cleanest industries out there, it's how they get customers, this is one of their selling features, right? The other piece of this is our very unique nature here. This is not something that's normal, right? There's a reason why Hut Eight has chosen Batavia and wants to partner with Batavia, it's because of our, call it God-given infrastructure, right, that we have sitting in front of us. So, you know, Chris gave us a little bit of a tidbit of knowledge there of what's going on in their world. There's reality to that, they will pick up and find somewhere else. There's a lot of money here, there's, even with the time invested, I can appreciate a, you know, a two-week or a one-week delay could seriously hinder things from a product availability standpoint. We know with the transformers, this is different than that, but I was just dealing with some clients today. So with that, I'll just say, I don't want to squander this opportunity, everyone, you know, think hard, this industry has come a long way, that we all have valid concerns, everyone, you know, and Abby, I appreciate your words for, for those who don't know this space, it can be a little overwhelming. But just know, there's, there's study after study out there, some of the ones that we've seen in the negative are, you know, these are older, these are high workload facilities, they are just getting better and better as time goes on, cleaner and cleaner. And a 50-megawatt space, I'm telling you guys, almost no one's taking that space right now. So to have these guys come in and want to partner here, these type of colo data centers, you know, at 50 megawatt is, it's a real sweet spot that we're finding here with these folks. So again, thank you for everyone involved, and appreciate the council's concerns and questions, but I will continue to be a heck yes vote.
And I would just like to pick up on what Alvin Lancy has just said. I have been kind of almost daily advised by Laura as to what is moving forward here, and I just can't say enough for the transparency and cover that she has brought to this whole thing, bringing all the city staff level folks that are having some role in this whole thing together. I see them in the office every day, and we're having another conversation about how we're gonna do this or this question, some of the stuff that's been written on, you know, the internet recently. There's, I think we've tried to come up with an answer for every comment that's been made, and Laura's done a great job of trying to make sure that our staff really is on top of this. And I'm hard pressed, having sat here for as many years as I have, to think of another project that has gotten such solid review and inspection and questioned by the staff level as this has done. So I'm very proud of our staff, that this has been a challenge. On the same side of that, I've had members of other governments in this town say, is that going forward? That could really be a nice shot in the arm to our government if that assessed valuation came onto the tax rolls, a lot of us could really use that extra money that this would produce. So there's some other folks in the community that are watching with great interest, not concerned that it's something bad, but that it's something that if it's handled right, it could be a big shot in the arm to some of the other governments who, right now, some of them, as they've been explaining to me, are having some troubling times trying to pay for everything that the world now wants from them in whatever they're doing, and that's several other governments. But I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on here, so this was almost like a piece of welcome news that came into the community when it got brought up here to the city council.
Alvin Fairbach?
You know, it's a first off, so four hours of discussion, lots of questions, right? I don't think we hit 100 questions yet, but it's been along four hours. Never mind the time on the internet, you know, which was spent, and the emails, so it's great, it's great that everyone hit all these questions. I know I learned a lot during this process. I'm glad we're doing the Brattle study, because quite frankly, I had to do a lot of discovery on our energy situation here, our electrical situation here. Prairie State, I knew, I knew like the back of my hand prior to this, but things like infrastructure, things like our usage, our excess that we had, you know, based on our pipe from Fermilab, how fortunate we are to have that Fermilab infrastructure here so we can entertain situations like this. They wouldn't be here if we didn't have that Fermilab plug and everything. And then finally, you know, the water. I know when I first heard about 625,000, whatever, my eyes got wide every day, I was like, you kid me, right? And I assumed that we would walk in and that'd just be dead in the water, right? So I'm glad that that got resolved, so thank you for that. Thank you for making the decision, by the way.
Yeah, we're talking, I mean, we heard it loud and clear.
Okay, yeah, and that's based on our conversation we had last week, right? So it's worth having these discussions, even if they're multi-hour. And then finally, the unsaid elf in the room, our approach towards business development, right? So it would have been nice to know about this earlier, I think we all agree on that, right? So, and I know Anthony's gonna have a proposal for us, we're gonna talk about how we approach business development, how we track it, how we have metrics around it. So that's another discussion that has to happen coming out of this as well. So I think ultimately, we've learned a lot, it is a great opportunity, it's a unique opportunity that we have because we're near Fermilab, right? And I even learned about Bitcoin, so thank you for that as well.
Anybody else in the council?
Alvin Pfeifer? I don't know. Given the proceeds that'll come into the city utility from this, once the initial infrastructure payoffs are done, we have Jim suggested last week that it could be used for paying down Prairie State early. Is there any benefit to doing that?
No, there isn't. We owe the exact same amount in interest, isn't that true, Peggy?
We owe the same amount.
Yeah.
It has a make-hold provision.
I see.
Unfortunately.
But I think, just, sorry to jump in here, but to kind of echo off there, you know, with some proceeds, you know, maybe this could be used for, you know, to continue with some of our environmental initiatives that we have within the community here, you know, again, once it's paid off, and also maybe for some reverse stabilization, maybe looking at using some of that for the river.
Eventually, we will get there, but first, we would like a piggy bank filled with enough money that will get us that extra 50 megawatts for additional development.
Councilor Dunn asking Alvin Wolf?
One more. And I think we all need to be reminded that there's $325,000 a year going into the general fund, you know, and that's gonna be a decision that the 14 of us will make as to what we're gonna spend that on. So that's something to keep in the back of your mind, that separate from the utility, there is that influx of money to the general fund. We have to figure out what to use that for.
There's a franchise tax that is paid for electric to the general fund, and property taxes that will be generated by the project as well.
Does anybody in the audience wish to address the city council on this subject? If you'd come up one at a time and give us your name, please, for the clerk, for the record?
Evening. John Dryden, 311 Lake Street, I know many of you, and I thank you all for your work on this, if I may be allowed to speak to the issue. I'm gonna strongly encourage you to table this for a couple of weeks. In order to amend the agreement, so that you have in writing the assurances on water usage, so you have assurances on not producing Bitcoin out of here, and a few other things. This may be one of those agreements that we decide in haste or regret for decades, not that this council has ever done that before, although it seems like we're trying to solve a mistake in the past with another quick decision. Be wary of the takeaway here. Be wary of being stamped into a decision on the takeaway, you have to do it now. Always cautious. My biggest concern, if the water's taken care of, and the usage is taken care of, is the size of the revenue itself that will be generated. This is, as I understand, it could be almost 5% of our future budgets, which is a lot of leverage to give anybody. It would leave you a very big hole in your budget, should something go pear-shaped. And I'm enough of a Murphy-ist to believe everything goes pear-shaped sooner or later. That's just how the world works. So I'm gonna caution you, tie everything down, don't rush, take a minute. This could be a good thing for the city, but it could, it could be something that's held over our heads. How will you negotiate in the future with someone who's, who has 5% of your revenue? It's too big of a hole. You lose all your leverage. So be very, very cautious. So be very, very cautious. Don't rush. Maybe you could table it a couple of weeks. Tie everything down. Thanks for your time.
Next person?
I'm Nick Longo. I'm here to represent the Friends of the Fox River. A lot of you have probably, hopefully, read a statement we put out earlier this afternoon, and you'll be happy to know I'm going to pivot based on the information I've heard tonight. We're still an advocate for pausing the decision tonight just from a water resources standpoint. I'm heartened to hear that water usage will go down, but overnight, the estimate has gone down three orders of magnitude. How sure are we that that is an actual commitment that can be backed up in writing? So until there is more of a formal commitment, and I'll piggyback off the previous commenter, how do we know that this is actually not going to change? I've seen things change from concept through design, through construction. If you don't have that commitment now, you'll likely see changes. And so I would encourage the council to make sure that our water resources are protected through a more formal commitment from the data center. And I also want to encourage, as water use issues come up in the city of Batavia, you know, we've got a great infrastructure for, you know, evaluating water resource issues. Don't delay the time that you talk to the Batavia Environmental Commission, the Fox River Study Group, and the Fox River Ecosystem Partnership. Thank you.
Quickly, I know Riley had something he wanted to say with respect to that. That's all right with everyone? Riley, go ahead.
Thank you, Chris. And apologies, I cannot see the video right now, so I don't know the name of that gentleman that spoke, but I think when it comes to assurances about water, part of the design review for the building will include a detailed mechanical engineering schematic of the building and the assurance there that the building meets state and local fire code and that the operation of the building is consistent with engineering standards for an industrial building of this power consumption, the amount of cooling that's done in the facility. And so there will be an assurance that we won't use water because our mechanical engineering design will not include the facilities that would be required to consume that water. But I think a better assurance of that is just understanding a little bit more about how we were able to make that decision so quickly. I know for someone who's not in the industry or is not an engineering nerd, it can seem kind of strange how we were able to decide that so quickly. So for a bit more background, in the data center industry, there are two main schools of thought about cooling computers. One is to use the refrigeration-style mechanism of the closed loop and air-cooled chiller, and that is where you continuously circulate a closed loop of liquid and you refrigerate it down to provide chilled water to the computers. And the other school of thought is to use evaporative cooling and to consume processed water on-site in order to cool down that same loop. Now, these are two very standard designs in the industry. If you look at data centers, you will see health designs being employed all over the globe, and it really comes down to personal preference, geography, et cetera. Now, the evaporative cooling design is particularly well-suited to dry climates. So you see the evaporative cooling design used very frequently in Texas. You see it being used in the Middle East. You see it being used in Southern Europe. You do not see the evaporative design being used in places like Singapore, Malaysia, Southern China, or the Midwest, or Virginia, which is the data center capital of the world. The reason is because as it is more humid outside, the evaporative cooling system becomes less efficient, and so it becomes a better choice to use the air-cooled chilling loop and the refrigeration loop. And so this was an easy decision for us to make because if in Texas, if we had to give up water, we would really be closing the door on several customers. But in this area of the country, in the Midwest, where evaporative cooling doesn't work in the hot summer nights of July, I mean, I'm not in Chicago right now, but I assume it might be kind of humid outside, it's not as efficient, not as effective. And so we're not necessarily closing the door on customers to choose this design. This is something that we use in other facilities, and it was more of optionality to see what, you know, again, as Chris had mentioned previously in this meeting, we have not chosen a customer yet, and so closing off a mechanical engineering design is potentially closing off a customer who wants to use that cooling solution, the facility. But again, as has been discussed here, as a co-location facility, we have more say over the design than in a typical build-to-suit project. And so that was an easy decision for us to make. We heard the words in the community. We understood that in the data center industry right now, it is not necessarily in vogue, nor are many people advocating for water consumption. And so it was an easy decision for us to make, and we could have made the decision earlier, and I wish I had done so and wish we had come last week with that decision made already and just made it easier for everyone. So I apologize for any hard burn that we caused with regards to water consumption, but I just want to clarify that it's an easy decision to make because it is a binary choice that we make with almost every facility we build. So I hope that helps.
Actually, and I also would just add, we're happy to put it in writing. I mean, that's fine. I mean.
I was just going to say, because once, you know, what everybody needs to understand, once they put this in, it attracts a certain type of customer. They chase the infrastructure, they chase the environment, right? Like I said last time, these guys are, they're a real estate company. They're selling space in a warehouse, right, for people to bring their computers in. So, you know, everybody has a very unique way of thinking on where they'd like their computers to be and where they want them to live and how they want them to live. This will be a unique facility where it will be a, you know, one way to do it, and if you don't like that, well, you don't come to this facility type of thing. So I just wanted to, they can't really flip-flop.
We got a couple of people still in the audience that wanted to speak.
Pat McVay, Pat McVay from Batavia. I think the comments and the changes that have been made were great. I'd like to comment on that because it now leads into an article that I just saw today from the U.S. Green Building Council, the US GBC, which has an article called "Applying LEED to Data Center Projects." And it's just new. Comes out, it came out in June of this year, and it asks the question, what are the advantages of using LEED for data centers? And their answer to it is a short paragraph. I'm going to quote it because I don't have any other copy. I don't have a PowerPoint. So, "LEED is the world's first green building rating system to address data centers. By bringing these projects into the suite of LEED rating systems, US GBC is addressing barriers so these facilities and their owners can successfully demonstrate their sustainability goals. LEED-certified data centers are a triple bottom line in action, benefiting people, planet, and profit. By earning LEED certification, these projects can consume less energy, less water, fewer natural resources, and ultimately aim to reduce the overall impact of development on the local, regional, and global environment." Maybe this comment is more directed to Chris, but I encourage the Batavia DC Corporation to think about it, at least entertain the idea. So that's my comment. Thank you.
I don't know if you were here last week, but we did talk about that. We are going to be evaluating LEED certification for the building.
Yes.
Yep.
What do you think? Have you been able to try it?
Like I said, there's just this order of operations, and I know it's unfortunate for people in the room, right? Step one, we have to have power. If we don't have power, we can't get a customer. If we can't get a customer, we can't talk to them about the very specific intricacies of how we're going to design it, right? So, I mean, yes, it is 100% part of the plan to evaluate it in full, and to the comment about us being triple bottom line.
Right.
Look, at the end of the day, it's a more financially advantageous design to use all the water. If we were triple bottom line, I wouldn't be in here saying we're not going to use water, right?
Especially for certain kinds of customers. We're really oriented in that direction.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, of course.
And I will share on top of that, our team will pursue a LEED certification for the building, and it is something that our engineering folks to be very proud of to get on this building. It is almost industry standard at this point to have a LEED certification on data center buildings, and in fact, almost 15% of LEED gold-certified buildings in the world are data centers. And so that is something that our team will pursue with vigor, and this is something that we can achieve through proper cooling systems, proper building materials, and something that our team will be very proud to do and is a goal of many folks in the team. So, yes, hear that comment, and we agree, and it's definitely a good selling point for us as well.
Thank you. Susan?
Good evening. Susan Russo, Batavia. As has already been mentioned several times, it has been a mere 10 days since the public learned of the master services agreement with Batavia DC Corp. That is not an exemplar or a stellar example of governmental transparency. As I reviewed the agreement, I formed additional questions that I believe that city council needs to answer in order to thoroughly evaluate this agreement. And I shared those questions with you this morning by email and received responses from city staff. I'm happy to share with anyone else here copies of those questions and responses, if they would like them. I'm saying responses because I do not believe that I received adequate answers to the questions that I posed. I'm not going to go through all of these questions blow by blow, but I do want to address the three major concerns I have about this master's services agreement. And the first one is, why is Batavia reimbursing the data center for the 18 million in infrastructure costs for a single user? I know there was discussion last week that this data center will encourage other data centers to co-locate in Batavia, but the fact is that once this data center is built, Batavia will not have the ability to provide electricity to another data center without incurring significant additional infrastructure costs. Existing Batavia ratepayers may not be paying for this reimbursement out of our pockets, but we are paying for it in the lost revenues to the city's utility. A second critical question about the reimbursement provision is, why doesn't this agreement provide for penalties if the data center terminates operation within a certain number of years? Especially, for example, if it terminates operation shortly after it receives reimbursement of 60% of the infrastructure costs or after it receives reimbursement of 100% of the infrastructure costs. The response I got from city staff is that Hut Eight, quote, "probably would not," end quote, "terminate early because of the size of its investment." Probably? I worked as an attorney for 37 years and never once advised a client that it was okay to not put in a contract provision because the opposing party probably wasn't going to do something or might do something. These provisions are put into a contract because speculation and oral statements are not enforceable. If the penalty is not needed, great, but get one in the agreement. And the last question, I believe, is one of the most important. The electric director said that this data center impacts Batavia's ability to grow and to electrify, and we heard it again tonight. This data center will severely reduce Batavia's electricity reserve margin at the ComEd Fermilab substation. Why does this agreement not require the data center to pay its fair share of the cost to upgrade Batavia's 150-megawatt node so that the burden to upgrade this substation in the future is not placed on other commercial or residential customers? And think about it. This one data center will use the same amount of electricity that is used by all of Batavia's 26,000 residents, all of its schools, library, and park facilities, all of its businesses, and all of its manufacturers. This data center is gobbling up Batavia's substation reserve margin. It isn't a question of whether this substation will need to be upgraded, and we heard that again tonight. They're applying for an upgrade with ComEd this week. The question is, when will we need it? This data center must pay its fair share of that cost. I have raised tonight questions about the agreement itself. There are also many questions that need to be considered in a thoughtful, not a hasty manner. I believe that Batavia is anxious to host a data center and to start realizing the revenues from it, but unfortunately, anxiousness is a poor contract negotiator. Please let cool heads prevail and take the time to analyze this agreement and its ramifications thoroughly. Thank you.
Just one comment there. I mean, I can't comment on a lot of that, but on the penalty side of things, right, in the scenarios that were brought up there, you know, if we were to cancel this contract for some reason, you know, four or five years in after 60% reimbursement, our penalty in that scenario is a half a billion dollars in construction that we lost, plus $10 million in infrastructure improvements we bought for the city and didn't get reimbursed that you guys can use for whatever you want. So it's a deep, steep penalty. I can't really imagine a steeper one. In the scenario where we get the full 18 million back, the penalty is still a half a billion dollars, plus you've gotten all that infrastructure for, I mean, it's free, right? And you got the time value of money. We paid you 18 million now, you paid us 18 million back over seven-plus years in that scenario. You got the time value of that money, and you got all the infrastructure for free. You can use it for whatever you want. So just a clarification on what the actual penalty would be for us to leave.
Alderman Lancy?
Yeah, I'm just curious if anything like that has ever been discussed or written into a contract with any business anywhere in this town.
In terms of early closures and...
Yeah, if you don't make it, we're going to penalize you.
In certain situations where we have provided an advanced incentive, I have seen it written into agreements where if there's early termination, there'd be a clawback of what the city provided in advance. But here, we're not providing anything in advance. We're paying back the cost of the infrastructure with the revenue that's being generated by the project itself, and then thereafter, you know, the additional revenue will be used to make improvements to our system by the additional transformer. to our system by the additional transformer, make the ComEd upgrade.
Yeah. So, just so everyone's aware, there's been, you know, there's been some, some work done on, on that side of it. So I just don't want to, I feel like there's some misconception there.
And just one other quick thing worth mentioning is the distribution charge, right?
Yes.
So that's four-plus million dollars a year in addition that we're going to pay to the city to maintain the infrastructure you guys already have, right? That money's not showing up to you guys today, right? So, you know, two and a half million dollars in ECA, $4 million in distribution charge, plus the infrastructure is free because we prepay for it, just to be clear.
So, only because we had those concerns raised, I know if I were watching this from home, and I sat through five hours now of questioning on this, and we just had that come at the tail end, my first question would be, just, just to ask, we've had the city attorney review this MSA. Is that correct?
We have, we hired special counsel with experience in negotiating data center agreements.
So we've checked that legal review box. Thank you.
Anything else in the council?
I think there's an additional resident.
Any else out there?
Chuck Zamuda, 1222 Beckman in Batavia. I just want to echo what the first gentleman said. I hope you guys are considering this additional money that you're going to be taking in, the control, I guess. It's not necessarily the, the business itself's problem. It's more sort of your problem, but there have been plenty examples, not necessarily with data centers, just big businesses. Amazon is, I don't want to say famous, but it's happened with them, I know for sure, where, I'll just say it this way, it may not be 100% accurate, they get their hooks in, into the city with the revenues, and all of a sudden, because the city is then tied to spending that money or getting those services or free things such as school laptops or software or whatever, then the company starts pushing or sort of infiltrating for ESG-type of stuff. Some of that's fine, some of it is some far-out woke stuff. So I would just really caution you guys, you know, if this goes through, I actually don't have a problem with it as long as the power problems are addressed. And I don't know what the Bitcoin problem is. I mean, if they're burning electrons, it's really their business, frankly. But please be very wary of that as you're doing budgets and taking in this money, that you guys are supposed to be running the town, not some other company. So, you know, we don't want, I hope whatever the agreement is or whatever the end agreement is, is they're cutting checks for property taxes or whatever without any type of ESG-type of requirements. They're staying out of the politics and the social aspect of it. Environmental stuff, they're going to have to meet, but that should be about it. So please be wary of that. I wanted, I wasn't even here for this. I'm here for something else, but thank you.
Oh, sorry. Chuck?
Charles Zamuda, Z-M-U-D-A, 1222 Beckman.
Charles, just, just quickly on that topic, right? There's no, I hear what you're saying. There's no, like, governance controls or voting controls or anything that comes with this agreement? Nothing. And the only way that we pay in is if we're here operating and being a part of the community. So that, I'm not really even sure what influence we could-
Yeah, as a data center, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just wanted to-
Totally.
You read, you read about the horror stories and you're like, you don't want to go down this road here.
Yep.
So one of the things that has been mentioned here is the aspect of time and its effect on their ability to secure the property and thus to entertain getting proposals for putting tenants in this building. But I also heard suggestions on wanting there to be an agreement with regard to the type of cooling system and that the facility wouldn't become a Bitcoin facility. And while I don't know that we have precedence with other users in the city, we could enter into a separate water services agreement with them, which would allow, if you want to, vote on the master services agreement for electric tonight and then have us negotiate a separate water agreement. They have said they'd be willing to do that and incorporate those terms.
Well, this is back in the hands of the city council. It's, what's your pleasure right now? What do you want to do?
I think that's a good compromise. It allows them to move forward. It doesn't kill the deal. Gives us a little time. I mean-
And I think one of the biggest concerns that I heard was water. Water usage. I mean, and that's something I've talked about on the council the entire time I've been here with both of the water superintendents that we've had for the past 22 years. They watch that really close. They know what the water levels are in the wells. They know what the effect will be when other cities come off of the aquifer, you know, and that's something that they're planning for and they have been planning for. I mean, the last time they talked about that with, I believe it's the Great Lakes Water Resource Area or whatever their acronym is, they're planning out 50 years from now. And, you know, that's something that they watch, what the lake levels are because of all the water that comes out in the Chicagoland area out of the lake. That, in a lot of respects, scares me more than the wells we have.
Oh, does somebody want to make a motion? We have before its resolution, 2025-082-R, authorizing execution of an MSA with Batavia DC Corporation.
All moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion from the council?
I just wanted to say that it'll be contingent on the water MSA as well. Yes? Can we amend that motion?
Yeah, amend the motion.
Can you amend the motion?
Yeah.
That we vote on this contingent on there being a water master services agreement as well.
Well, it would be, this is the master service agreement. Then it would be like a, I don't know, it wouldn't be a, it would be just a, would it be another MSA for water or would it be just-
Yeah, it would be a separate agreement. So we would, we would vote on approval of this agreement. Mayor would have authority to sign it tomorrow, and then we would negotiate the water master services agreement.
Any other questions? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
No.
Lomen?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Ferenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ooh, where did I miss? Well, yes, one no, one absent.
Motion's approved. 12 yes, one no. So we still get plenty of work before you, Laura.
It's all right.
All right, moving to 13, we have the administrator's report, Laura.
I just have a few things to share with you. We have put in the purchase order for the public restrooms. The final price was a little higher than we expected, but still 368,500. The increase was due to the cost of finalizing air conditioning, which I'm sure that on a day like today, we can all very much appreciate, we'd want to have that resource even though we live in this temperate climate. Our first preparedness police and popsicles event was very successful. I stopped in this room and every seat was filled and the kids were very engaged and, of course, river was probably their favorite part of the day, too. But parents requested us to have more of these and to allow younger kids to attend as well. In Public Works, the EV charger installation is happening at the high school right now, and the Interfaith food pantry and clothes closet remodeling construction is underway. The police department also hosted a cones-with-a-cop event on this past Thursday, handing out free scoops of ice cream to the attendees at the Batavia Creamery. And the PPAF will actually not increase on people's electric bills in August. NIPA began a credit of the ECA that somewhat offsets these charges for the month of August, and this combined with the higher consumption allowed for it to remain level. However, as consumption levels drop, when the weather gets cooler, we'd still expect that there will have to be an increase to the PPAF since the higher capacity costs are spread over the kilowatt hours consumed. So that around $7, Peggy? Did we say?
Yeah.
Average per household? About $7. Little bit lower than the, the ComEd increases, but just wanted to manage people's expectations in that regard. And that's all I have unless somebody has a question for me.
Questions for Laura? Almen, Vogelsinger?
I don't, it's false advertising. I don't have a question. I have a comment. My little guy went to the popsicle and preparedness seminar, and he said it was great. He had a ton of fun. He loved river. That was definitely the star of the day.
Yeah.
But he learned some stuff and feels very competent because he's kind of first aid certified, so it was really cool. He went with a neighbor-
That's great.
They had a great time.
That's great. Thank you for the feedback.
Any other questions, Laura? All right, then, only 14 other business. Does any of the council have any other things they want to bring up?
16 minutes to run a meeting.
We're going to get there. Okay, moving to 15, the mayor's report. I think the only thing I'd like to share is last Monday, we hosted a meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus for all the mayors in the six county area to come in and have a meeting here in the council chambers at nine o'clock in the morning. And the chairman of the caucus this year is Nancy Roderin, who some of you, probably everybody knew the name a couple of years ago. She was the mayor, she's the mayor of Highland Park, and she was the mayor that had the shooting where the guy got on the roof and shot a number of people, and he was trying to shoot her, but the police got in front of her and got her saved. She ran the meeting. Anyway, she comes in here and she says to me, I cannot, is this an old factory? And I told her, yes, it was. And I told her some of the history of what was going on. And she says, I just can't believe this town. I don't know if I've ever been here before, but I see all these buildings that have been rebuilt and all this downtown development along the river. She says, would it be okay if maybe I bring some of my aldermen down here for a day and you can tour us around? And I said, sure, if you want. So then when the meeting was over, she asked me if we could go for a walk on the Riverwalk. First, we did that. She wanted, then wanted to get in the car and go down and see the quarry swimming pool. So we went down and saw that. And then she wanted to go see some of the historic buildings in town, so I showed her Bellevue and Mary Todd Lincoln and whatever have you. She says, this is a very unique place. She says, I don't know if another suburb in this area's got as much good history going for it as you folks do. So I just thought I'd share that with you because I don't think the woman had ever been to Batavia before, but she was kind of overly impressed by what we were doing here and how we do it and how we took this old factory room and made it into a city council chambers that speaks to itself and the history of the building. So I just say congratulations to all of you who have helped do it because we got some, some rave reviews. So moving into 16, who wants to make the motion for adjournment?
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm going to have a real quick straw poll whether or not we're going to try and do this in 15, 20 minutes or whether we're going to say delay it to the next cow.
Abby, Abby, do you want to, do you want to delay the cow?
I'm fine.
No, I want to hang on.
Given the fact that we're this close to 10 o'clock and-
There are going to be two-
We know that great decisions are not made when everybody's looking at the door to leave. I don't think there's anything on there that we have to do tonight.
I would move to adopt Abby's suggestions for committees. I liked them.
I think the biggest thing to come out of that, while we're not doing it, is the fact that we, we can be more involved when somebody wants to be ahead of that, when somebody wants to present that. Because then more of the questions get asked up front by one person and then get answered either by email or before a meeting.
Do you do it next Tuesday night?
We can start it to cancel. We just don't, do we have to legally enter the meeting table to things?
No, they're just discussions.
I don't know. We're Mr. and Mrs. We absolutely don't have a forum.
The agenda's out. The agenda's posted.
One thing you could do, you could open up the meeting and then just vote the table everything and then close the meeting.
Okay.
That's probably the safest way of doing it.
That's fine. I'm not even going to move. We'll wait for Kate to get back there so we can do this hopefully the correct way.
I'm ready.
That's the 29th Tuesday night. Then we'll at least have time to discuss that we can be out of here in an hour, and then we're done. Okay? All right. I don't have it here. We're going to call to order the committee as a whole for today. July 21st. Roll call, please.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Malone, absent. Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lomen?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Ferenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
13 present, one absent.
It's 9:49. We are going to table the agenda for this cow meeting, special cow meeting, and we will have another one on July 29th at 7:00 PM. I'm looking for a motion for that.
No questions, Max. So moved.
So moved. He made the motion. He seconded it. Wait, Max had a question.
One of the things we had brought up last week was we could draft a policy or some sort of draft, and you did one additional discussion. You still want to have that additional discussion before we bring you back something to kind of think about?
I thought your questions were really good in that end of that long email. I think that that, if people haven't already given some thought to that, jotted down some thoughts, I think it would be good to have a discussion before you run blind into the night.
Perfect. Tonight, where we had questions and things that we all wanted to get out, I think that would be good so that way we have what I'll say is a very structured conversation about it, and then we don't spend two hours talking about it. So that way we can come away with some resolution to it.